Welcome to the April 12th New Market Planning Board meeting. Would you please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll voice out a couple of housekeeping things. I'd like to welcome Amy Burns.
Thank you.
Who is now the town council representative. Welcome. Look forward to working with you.
I as well, thank you.
Gonna miss you Dale.
Staying on as alternate.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you for your service. And also Ezra is going to be here sometime after eight, around eight. So in the meantime, I'll appoint Peter to fill in as the alternate until Ezra gets here. First item on the agenda is public comments. Anybody have any public comments on anything that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will open and close public comments at 7:02. Next is review and approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 3:15, 2016.
Second.
Is there any discussion, comments, corrections?
Just on page 22, line 18, "Any should be omitted." First word in that sentence.
Page 22, line 18.
Line 18. They should do the future land use chapter and present the idea for design guidelines as a recommendation. It has land use chapter and "Any present the idea for design." So just that word "any" I think is...
Okay.
Doesn't belong there.
Anything else Rosie?
Nope, that was it.
Anybody have anything else? Hearing none, all no more comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Abstaining.
Where the hell is abstaining?
It was abstaining.
All right. The first piece of regular business is consideration of an application for Glenn Wilkinson to join us as an alternate. I see Mr. Wilkinson is here tonight. Glenn, would you please come up? Right there, please. Everybody has your application and your resume, so I guess we don't really need to give... If you want to give a little speech, that's fine. Don't feel like you're obligated to, but other than that, if anybody has any questions for Mr. Wilkinson, please feel free.
I do, you know...
Why don't you give us a little bit of your background?
Yeah, I think one of the reasons I'm here tonight is I recently moved back to New Market after about a year and a half away. I do, now that I made permanent roots in the area by buying a place, I've decided, you know, I like to give back to community and get involved. Previously, maybe a couple of moves ago, I was in Brentwood, New Hampshire. I've been involved in corporate life for some time, so it's been a lot of moving and I don't do that anymore, so. I was in Brentwood. I did do the zoning board of appeals, which was actually interesting. I found it fun. But, you know, one of the things that I always wished I could do was be involved in the planning, sort of the front end of, how can I say, the problems that would end up on the CBA. And so that's why I've applied to the board now. My background has actually been heavily involved in, believe it or not, siting and locating and permitting solid waste disposal facilities and trucking operations. So I do have a familiarity in a broad sense across the Eastern Seaboard with zoning, planning, and other related issues. I don't do that anymore, so.
I noticed, a quick question, I noticed you still sell real estate?
I got my real estate license a little over a year ago, and yeah, I'm still actively involved in...
Locally?
I primarily focus in the Exeter market.
Okay.
So, and if there was any issues, any conflict of interest, I would immediately...
Sure.
...abstain from those kinds of issues.
Sure, absolutely.
Not, it's sort of, didn't do it because of the real estate. I have the real estate license, but I'm more, you know, interested in being a part of the community.
Sure, understood. Thank you. Anybody have any comments, questions? Go ahead Rosie.
I do. I just, I'm not comfortable with having... Val's a Realtor, and we've known her, her family have been here for many, many years, not saying that, not knowing anything about Mr. Wilkinson, but we have to have, if there's a conflict, they have to step down. And I don't know how many, if it would be a problem to have more Realtors and/or developers, I mean, on a planning use board. And I'd be apprehensive to approve a Realtor.
Because, oh, go ahead.
Because of the conflict thing.
Well, I think the likelihood that Glenn or I would be involved with any particular transaction together would be highly unlikely, number one.
Mm-hmm.
The, I think the other thing is, if one of us, I think a Realtor brings a particular perspective to a board based upon our experience, you know, with development and what is going on in communities.
Your input's been very valuable.
And so if one of us has to recuse ourself here, then the board still has, I think, the advantage of, you know, the other, you know, party being able to contribute.
Yeah.
I look at it as a positive.
Yeah, I do too. I mean, I look at it, and Rosie, any one of us could have a conflict on anything coming into this town. In a small town, you know, any one of our relatives could be in front of us, and I think the chances of it, you know, and if there is a conflict, he recuses himself.
I know.
You know, I mean, so...
And we have three alternates, so the fact that, you know, a board member, one alternate, would have to recuse ourself, that's why we have multiple alternates.
But I mean, you know, would a planning board member agree that that happens to be a Realtor? Would they agree to the fact that, say, I mean, some of these larger projects take one, two, or three years before they're fully realized? Would they be willing to say, "I sat on that board when this was approved, and it's three years down the road, but now you want me to represent you as a Realtor"? Would they be willing to say, "I can't represent you"?
They're legally required not to.
No, this is after the fact.
There's no conflict of interest down after the fact.
But see, to me, there would be. To me, if somebody sat on this board and approved a project, and it didn't come to fruition for two to three years, and they, at that point, decided to represent that developer in the real estate capacity, to me, that is a conflict of interest. So I am not in favor of adding any more Realtors to the board.
That's odd. We could take the same position of any developer, any development that's approved in town, and then one of us decides to move there later. Well, that was a conflict of interest because, "Oh, I like that golf course project, because I might want to live there someday."
Well, you're moving there. You're giving them money. They're not giving you money. You're not making, it's not a financial bonus for me moving someplace, but it would be for the developer. And like I said, Val, I wouldn't be sitting here if it wasn't for the confidence from you and your father asking me to run. And your input has been valuable, very valuable to this board. It's just I don't want to put more than one Realtor on the board, so I would have to say...
Okay. That's fine enough, you've had your say, and that's fine. I happen to disagree with that also, but what, anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Wilkinson? I think we have an opportunity here where, over the years, we've struggled to have alternates, you know, and we have somebody volunteering to actually help, and as you all know, this can be very tedious, and somebody's willing to step in and help us. I'm more than willing to pass the paddle, let them keep rolling with us, but... Does anybody have any other questions, comments? If not, take a motion?
Can I just ask?
Absolutely.
What position did you want, which, when we make the application, we should include the term for your...
Yep, we have to.
...retire.
There's two, there's two open terms. One expires 2017, one in 2018.
Let's do the two of 2018 and, you know, not deal with it as often.
Somebody willing to make a recommendation for a nomination?
Yeah, no. Sorry. I'd like to nominate Glenn Wilkinson to serve as an alternate on the planning board through 2018.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you very much Glenn.
Thank you.
You will have to, between now and the next meeting, go to see the town clerk and get sworn in.
Okay.
Or before, whenever you sit at a meeting.
Yeah, no, I'll make sure.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you.
I do too.
All right. So there's been a change to the agenda. Matt Sullivan is going to come in at 8:30, so we can go through the public hearings, hopefully.
Okay.
And then we won't feel rushed, he won't feel rushed. So next on the agenda is a public hearing. It's Eversource Energy, public hearing in accordance with RSA 231-158 for tree pruning and clearing on Town of New Market scenic roads by Eversource Energy. This hearing is scheduled in accordance with RSA 231:158, as requested by Eversource Energy to engage in pruning and cutting along Bay Road in the Town of New Market. The proposed activity will include but not be limited to tree cutting, trimming, and removal of brush-in trees. All proposed activity and criteria for action by the applicants will be presented and reviewed at this public hearing. So at 7:12, I will open the public hearing. Is there a representative from Eversource here? Would you want to please come up and introduce yourself, sir?
Hi, good evening. I'm Bob Burner. I'm the arborist at Eversource in the New Market area. Eversource seeks approval from the board to trim and remove trees and brush along Bay Road, which has been designated scenic by the town. Our clearance standard remains the same. We will remove limbs and branches that are growing within eight feet to the side, 10 feet below, and 15 feet above our energized conductors. In addition, brush growing underneath the wires will be targeted for removal. We have identified and submitted a list to the board of 12 risk trees that we would like to remove along Bay Road also. Our contractor for this project is Lewis Tree Service. We would like to begin the work within the next few weeks. All property owners have been notified at least 45 days in advance of this work beginning. The only folks who haven't been notified are the owners of the trees in question, and if we get approval from the board, we will go ahead and speak to those folks before we remove their trees. Are there any questions?
Before we get to that, too, I don't know if any of you had a chance to take a ride. I took a ride, I looked at the trees, and I think this list is self-explanatory. You know, the trees are basically dead, and they're gonna fall and hit the wires, or hit cars, or hit walkers, or whatever anyways. So I think it's a prudent mission to undertake. Does anybody have any questions?
Did you and the same company do the work in Durham on Bay Road?
In where?
In Durham, section of Bay Road.
No, that was another one of our contractors. That was Asflin Tree Expert, who did that work.
I mean, I thought that looked okay.
I'm sorry?
I thought that looked okay.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
Somebody else said something, Val?
Is there any coordination with Public Works to actually, while they're out there, to remove, like, dead limbs that keep falling down into Bay Road?
I've worked with Rick Malansky a few times in the past where we've worked collaboratively. We've supplied a tree crew, and the town has assisted with traffic control and wood disposal, so we have an ongoing relationship, I would say.
Okay, so if we can bring those to Rick's attention?
Absolutely.
And I understand is that somebody from Eversource, maybe yourself, Rick has seen these trees and agreed, the DPW has agreed that these trees definitely need to come down?
I don't know if Rick has seen this list.
Oh, okay.
Have we submitted the list to the board? Rick has come to me in the past with trees that have concerned him, and we've worked it out that way.
Okay.
One simple question. How many, so you're doing it this year, and then how many years from in the future will you come back? Maybe three years?
We're on a four-year cycle.
Four-year cycle.
Mm-hmm.
One question I would have, if it could be done. I'm just writing four years down, please. Some of those poles are not very clearly marked. You know, they have those little silver numbers.
Okay.
Some of them are very old and hard to read. Maybe they could just, in my opinion, be a lot easier if, they can't put the homeowners' name because that'd be time consuming, but they put close to, you know, still the pole number, but close to number 245 Bay Road. I think it'd be a lot easier, because I went up and down the street several times to find some of these poles.
A lot didn't have ribbons on them.
Thank you.
Only five did.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, I read them this evening, and most of them were still ribbon, we're pretty lucky.
Yeah, the first five, yeah, went there. Because I had no ribbon, no ribbon, no ribbon.
No ribbon, no ribbon, yes.
I found 11 of them a week ago, but, you know, they were ribbons.
They could have blown off.
A map doesn't hurt either. I mean, we do live in a world of Google Maps, so, you know...
He did send to us a map showing basically the length of Bay Road that's in New Market.
Okay, I just didn't see it.
All right, so any other questions?
No, that's okay, but I just thought that would be easy for, I mean, I'm an older member of the community, so I pretty much tuned into some of these places, and I had two people in the car, one to look on one side and one to look on the other side, because the poles aren't the size of the streets, depending. And I said, you know, it may be easier for people if they could in the future make a note to say, "Pole number 914, 915, near house lot 245." That's all. It's a simple thing, I don't know if you can do it or not.
It makes sense. Traditionally, we use the pole numbers because of when there are large, open areas where there is no house number associated with it. So that's what we felt is, you know, been the easiest way to identify things.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions, concerns? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, this is the third or fourth time I've been through the review of this with public, formerly with Public Service, now with Eversource, and I just, I went back in our old files just to get an idea of what our concerns or issues were previously. And there were a couple of conditions placed on the last approval, and one was that there be some kind of photographic evidence provided of what the affected trees would be, and that would help to, you know, identify them if you're out in the field looking. And there was also interest at that time in the town acquiring any wood chips that might not be of interest to the property owners, and if there could be some system set up, maybe they could be at the Public Works Garage or something, but where they could be made available to residents.
I can discuss that with Rick if he has an area for us to dump. That would certainly help us out, and then the chips would be available to the residents.
And I guess the third thing is, I'd like to, you know, just make sure that Rick Malaski is coordinating with you in the process, because I went out with him last time. Last time we went through this, I think it was about a year ago, and there was one tree that we weren't quite sure of, and I think you were able to work out some kind of arrangement with him, and he's very knowledgeable, and it would be a good resource for you to work with.
In the future, I always offered to, or I have in the past also offered to do a walk down with anyone who, make myself available, so that's always an option.
So those are my only comments. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Could you just remind me, what's the process then if the homeowners themselves object to a tree?
We, without the homeowner's permission, we cannot remove the tree. We would then perhaps seek to trim it, if they'll, you know, allow us to trim it. That would be the next fallback.
Isn't there a process, though, if it's deemed to be a dangerous or an emergency situation?
We can go, we can go to the road agent if we feel it is an imminent threat, and he can grant us the authority to remove the tree.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Is our motion to recommend approval?
No, in this particular case, the planning board can act on this.
Okay.
I think last time we did this, there was something...
Do we have to recommend it, and then it went to the council?
No. It only goes to the council or the road agent if there's a disagreement on what trees should be taken down. That's my understanding.
Yep.
Last time, it was initiated at the town council level, but the previous three or four applications, it does say in the statute, it's the purview of the planning board.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'll make a motion to grant approval for the removal of the trees. There's 11 trees designated on the list on Bay Road, New Market, New Hampshire, as hazardous trees by Eversource.
Second.
On the condition that they do meet with Rick Malaski regarding the potential of storage of wood chips for use by residents, and photographic evidence of the affected trees be provided to the town planner.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, moving on. Another continuation of a public hearing for Grant Road LLC for an application for subdivision of 216 Grant Road, tax map R6, Lot 27 in the zone R1. Proposal is to subdivide the 8.936 acre lot into two lots, one being 4.035 acres and the other being 4.901 acres. For those of you that weren't here, or those at home that didn't watch the last meeting, this is, I call it the so-called Dearborn property. At the last meeting, I think we had a couple of questions. One was regarding prime wetlands, and the second, I think outstanding issue was site access from DOT and DES septic system approval. So with that, I see we have an engineer in front of us, perhaps?
For your record, my name is Peter Zodi. I am employed with Herbert and Associates. My address, 1 Frost Road, New Hampshire. And if you have a problem with my accent, I can repeat myself.
So far, so good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is subdivision of parcel R-6, Lot 27 of Granite Road. We call it Granite Road LLC subdivision, because my client is here, is in LLC. We are subdividing this almost nine-acre lot to, one lot 4-901 acre, and the other lot, the second lot, 4-035 acre. There is an existing cemetery, I don't know the date of cemetery, on the parcel of land, and there is a driveway is meant for abiding lot, Lot 27-5, that was set up a long time ago. We showed those on the plan. At the last meeting, there was a discussion about prime wetland, prime wetland. We got it from your map. Ms. Hardy helped us, and we showed it on the plan. We are complying with prime wetland and prime wetland setback. The soil on this, the wetland was flagged by Jim Goff from Goff Environmental Services. My surveying crew picked it up, and we plotted it. And right now, at the last meeting, there was two approval requests, but it is mandatory. One is New Hampshire DES. I got a letter from New Hampshire DES, April 8. May I, ma'am?
Sure, please do.
You know, I thought I saw something come across my desk.
That's the state subdivision approval?
Yes.
Yes, I think it did.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if I filed in my folder. Thank you. Oh, okay, great.
They want to separate Hydric A and Hydric B. I wanted to bring it to your attention that we didn't use any of the Hydric A or B part of our lot sizing, because we had plenty of land outside Hydric A and B. And we are going, we sent the plan back. I'm hoping that by the end of this week, I get New Hampshire DES approval. Thank you, ma'am. And the other one was New Hampshire DOT. About a month and a half ago, Mr. Chairman, I met with George from New Hampshire DOT onsite. We walked the site, we went up and down, and we got to a point that we said, "This is a good site distance," because at 3.75, we were eyeballing it. You can see a subject 400 feet away at 3.75, and I marked it, then later on, we sent our field crew out to make sure that we meet the requirement, and we moved it a little bit, about a foot or so, and that, there is a site plan, planned part of your package, that we are meeting that site. I was hoping tonight, I'd come to you with the approval, but I do not have the approval. I have a letter that DOT is saying is approval.
George's?
Yes.
Yep.
I guess his boss or whatever is on vacation, and he cannot, this is what Mr. Big told me, he cannot sign the approval for that. He gave us a letter that I can show the board.
So the, the long and short of it is, you added the prime wetlands to the plans, and you meet our prime wetland setbacks, and you are waiting for DES and DOT approval. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Just a clarification from Diane. On our, the last meeting, you had read that from the prime wetlands, the structure setback is 100 and septic is 125, but this plan notes 75.
The buffer is 75. Building setbacks are 100. Let me just verify that, 125. Septic system is 150 for not prime wetlands, but for any, if it's within the Class A watershed protection zone.
Right, we determine, they determine that that's not fine.
And I have found that it's not in the, but within that distance. So let me just verify the figures again. But it is a 75-foot buffer, which is a no disturbance zone.
So they're just not showing the setbacks?
No, they're not. They're more scaling it, looking at, they're certainly more than...
Not that it's going to affect it, it's even doubling those.
Right, exactly.
But if they're required to be shown on the plan, setbacks?
Yeah, we should show them to make sure that they meet them as a condition.
Chairman is very easy to show, but if I show that, your setback from wetland is further back, means the prime wetland setback is another line inside another setback.
Oh, it's inside the other wetland.
It all becomes moot in the final analysis.
Because if you double that.
Up to here.
Yeah, okay.
It's up to the board. We'd be glad to add another setback to the plan to make it confusing.
Could you explain that again, please?
Yeah.
Explain that again. Thanks.
I just want to confirm that it is 75-foot buffer, no disturbance around the prime wetland. Structures shall be set back 100 feet from prime wetlands, and onsite septic systems shall be set back 125 feet. So that was correct, Ms. Sheldon. Thank you.
So what, Rosie, to answer your question, what the gentleman is saying is that, to show 125-foot setback to the prime wetlands, that's within the 50-foot wetland buffer. So it's just another line on the plan that makes it confusing. They obviously meet the requirement. We should have, rather than show a line, we should have a note on the plan.
Sure.
I would recommend having a note that just says the minimum setbacks to the prime wetland are, and here's what we're proposing for the setbacks. That way, it's on the plan.
That's right.
All right. I agree with you, adding another line would probably just make it very confusing, because that's within the wetland buffer setback.
So you're supposed to have a 75-foot setback from the prime wetlands, and then 50 feet from the prime wetland is another buffer?
50 feet from the very poorly drained soils, and then 25 feet from poorly drained. And I believe we're dealing with poorly drained soils.
Because here, he has a 50-foot wetland buffer.
Yes, that's from, that's a wetland, the regular wetland, not the prime wetland.
Okay.
And that's from 100 acres, which are very poorly drained soils.
And I had a question. What was behind, because remember I mentioned last time, just quickly, the, this conservation notification? Is this mat lot behind here? Is that the one that you mentioned, Eric, that was conservation?
27-6.
Yeah. Is that conservation, you said?
Yeah, it's protected by a conservation easement by the New Hampshire Fishing Area Division.
Okay, all right. I remember it was mentioned, I wasn't sure where it was. Okay.
It's my understanding that the current owner is interested in donating some additional land to the town for conservation purposes, and it's my understanding that consists of the entirety of Lot 27, which is 4.9 acres. Can you clarify that? Is that correct?
It's the back of the lot.
But that's not, wait a minute.
It's not the whole thing.
That's not part of this application, though.
Oh, okay.
You're not, you're not proposing that at this point, correct?
That is correct. Mr. Big been working with conservation and the town planner. If we do such a thing, if we change the lot line, you will have to see me again.
Right, right.
But you're in negotiations, or your client is in negotiations with the Conservation Commission on that? Or you have been? Or you have been?
I've had discussions with them about the process of donating that piece in the back.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I just wanted to, just to clarify for the record.
Is there, is there anybody in the public who wants to speak or comment on this subdivision application? Okay, as far as I'm concerned, we're at a point where we have, I think we have a plan that's, we should approve conditionally with obtaining DES and DOT permits and with showing the, in a tabular form, whatever, the setback to the prime wetlands. That's my opinion, what's everybody else think?
I think the plans also need to be stamped.
They do.
Yes.
By both the wetland scientists.
That's correct. And I think we noted that on the application checklist and the applicant has acknowledged that they'll get that done for us.
I had one question on number thirteen on the notes. The shrubs and trees to be cleared to obtain the four hundred site distance. Who will be responsible for maintaining that after?
That is the landowner.
The landowner, the landowner cannot get occupancy permit until he clear that area of scrap, brush and stuff, then he can get the occupancy.
Right, but once that's done, you know.
It's on the landowner's land, it's not in the public way.
So.
But I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
There is an easement.
Right.
There is an easement. I believe the Public Works Director has authority to cut trees if it's obstructing public safety and
Oh, yes, yes. We don't want, we don't want to get into a situation where the town has to do that. The homeowner, the homeowner is supposed to do it.
Would that be put on as a deed restriction or a?
It is a deed restriction, it's an easement, which is a restriction on the deed. Nothing can be built in there and it has to be maintained. It's supposed to be maintained.
As long as it states that it has to be maintained. Because I don't want the town to be responsible for it.
Correct. Take a shot, sure.
Make a motion to grant the application for subdivision at two sixteen Grant Row, tax map R six, lot twenty-seven in the zone R one, to subdivide the eight point nine three-six acre lot into two lots, one being four point oh three-five acres and the other being four point nine oh one acres, subject to the approval of the state highway access permit for subdivision prior to the signing of the plans by the chairman and notation placed on the plan indicating the New Hampshire DOT approval. Condition two, approval of the state subdivision approval prior to plan signing and a notation placed on the plan indicating the New Hampshire DES approval number. Number three, the addition of a notation on the plan with regards to the prime wetland setbacks. And number four, that these, the plans are stamped by wetland scientists and surveyors.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, folks, appreciate it.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving right along. Next on the agenda is Real Estate Advisors, Inc., continuation of a public hearing for an application for site plan review at one R Grape Street, tax map U two, lot two oh six, in the R three zone. The proposal to add, is to add a four-unit condominium building with related parking to the property. So while, Alex, are you representing that?
I am.
Okay. Oh, you're both stepping down, okay. So while Alex is preparing, everybody, I believe, has a copy of the memo from our attorney, John Ratigan? Everybody have that?
You've got that one.
That one, yeah.
Yep, okay. So as we all know, last meeting, we had a large discussion about aesthetics. We have a letter from our attorney that says we can take aesthetics into account. Have you seen this yet?
Have not.
You have not, okay, I will.
I have not distributed because I wanted to get permission from the planning board to do so before we distribute it publicly. Because it is an attorney from letter and it's privileged confidential information. So I guess I was hoping we could have a vote on that.
Yep, absolutely.
I make a motion to release the legal opinion from John Ratigan regarding aesthetics.
Say a second. All in favor? Any discussion? All those say aye, aye. All those opposed, say nay, nay. So Alex, I expect that that's news to you and to your client. However, I think at the last meeting, we were down to aesthetics. I think all the engineering issues had been addressed. We had talked a lot about drainage and Bob Medei was here and I think we were all
Gave them the waiver.
Into that, right. So I guess I'll throw it out there, what's the pleasure of the planning board as to addressing aesthetics? It says we have the right to, doesn't say we have to. And everything in between, I guess, is fair game. So there was discussion about dormers and whatnot. Does anybody have any ideas to throw out there?
I have, maybe even before we, well, you want to cover that first, but I did have another question about the electrical wires there.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to ask the abutters if the electrical boxes that were pulled off the homes from the trees and the wires at three and four Grape?
Three and five. I live at three Grape Street, I'm the one that wrote the letter, I just couldn't be here last.
Please, excuse me, before you start, could you just introduce yourself so people at home know what's going on?
I'm Janice Lamontaine, I live at three Grape Street. One of the abutters is going to be mostly affected by this plan. And I wrote a letter that was read by Peggy Small Porter last week, last meeting, regarding the, the tree. It's funny, we were talking about dead trees on the other one. This was, tree had been up there for many, many years, you could tell just by looking at it. It was dead for a long time. I spoke to Mr. Cheney about it, not in a meeting, outside a meeting, and he knew about it. I told him I was concerned about the danger of it. And then one night, it cracked and fell and pulled all the wires and there were live wires in our yards. And we had a power outage, they had to turn our power off because of the live wires. And the power was out for almost twenty-four hours. And the tree is, broken tree is still on the property. This happened at the beginning of February and nobody's cleaned it up. The, I contacted Doc, Mr. Cheney's, I say doctor a lot because I'm a nurse, sorry. Mr. Cheney's office, I think I spoke to Alex, and she told me that this was Eversource's problem. My, my thought was if it's Eversource, if the tree's on his property, why didn't, and he must have known that the wires were there illegally. Why wasn't something done about this before this happened? Now, the, of course, electricity was fixed. We had to pay a thousand dollar, Mr. Blake and I had to pay a thousand dollar deductible to the insurance company. And Mr. Cheney apparently hasn't responded to anything. Mr. Blake tried to contact him, I tried to contact him. And he's, you know, and the tree is still there. The, all the debris from the tree is still there and this is April. So my concern was, we're talking about aesthetics. I'm looking out the window at a bunch of tree limbs and a broken tree trunk just sitting there. I showed you, I sent the picture. And, and what kind of, you know, what kind of neighbor are we getting here, you know? It's like, I've had to call the office just to get him to cut the grass. The grass was up like a two, a foot and a half tall last summer. I had to call him to get him to cut the grass. And that's, that's my concern. And I don't know if it, you know, talking about aesthetics, I don't know if he's, what's, what's going to happen and I'm very concerned about it. And we had, we, while I'm up here, we had asked for brick, if not brick housing, then a brick facade. And all, and also you were saying the windows, what do you call them, dormer windows?
Dormers, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're still, still hoping for that.
And I'm sure we're going to talk about that tonight.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, that's what's happening now. Nothing's happened, basically. The tree's still there. Some neighbor came and I heard, I heard a saw out there and I guess he was getting firewood.
If I could follow up.
You know, and if I had a fireplace, I would have done the same thing.
Now, Ms. Lamontaine, is there any indication that your insurance is going to go up because of this incident?
I haven't heard anything yet. Usually you don't know, find out until you get the next bill.
All right, and, and the wires going through the trees, who were they servicing?
Well, they were servicing our homes.
Your homes and?
I know three and five, I can't tell, I can't speak to any other homes. I know that there was a power outage, all, I think a lot of the houses on this street had a power outage, but I don't know if it was from that tree. I think it was from, because it was such a windy, it was such a windy night. I mean, I heard the tree snap.
Was it servicing the six-bait garage there? Do they have electricity in there?
They don't have electricity in that garage.
Only because if, I read with the ZBA decision. And condition number one, and I think this would fall into your category, there shall be no financial obligation incurred on the abutting property owners associated with removing and relocating of the power and telephone lines to their properties. Now, this wouldn't, of course, cover the telephone lines, but the power.
Yeah.
The power, I believe.
I still have wires.
That's a, and I understand, Rosie, but let's not go there. That's a ZBA decision and that's up to Mike to enforce? That's a code enforcement situation, that's beyond our capability.
The tree's on his property, it's not on our property.
Oh, understood.
There would be nothing we could have done about it because it's his property.
It's a ZBA decision that we can't step in the middle of, that's all I'm saying. And that, once the ZBA has made a decision.
If they're not adhering to the ZBA conditions, then I don't believe the planning board has any right to approve the application. I like that.
Alex, please step up. Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are you finished asking me questions for now?
For now, I guess, yeah.
I'll be here.
Just to answer some of her concerns, we have been talking to Eversource for quite some time. Actually, since, I want to say last summer, we contacted Eversource for the first time, trying, we legally cannot cut down the tree because there were power lines through it. There's nothing that we legally can do. Eversource has handed us off to two different people. We're finally working with somebody who is moving the lines for us or were hoping to move the lines for us. I have been in contact with both her and her neighbor, who have contacted me many times, and I have forwarded them to Eversource because the wires on the property that are on my property illegally are not my responsibility. As far as the tree goes, the tree is still there because there is somebody who is interested in cutting it up for firewood, who is going to come and get it, but because of the snow and the ice and the wet ground, they have not been able to. As far as them going onto the property and using it for firewood, that's trespassing. And also, when the tree came down, Walt went to the property immediately and talked to the people that were there working. I went to the property immediately and talked to the people there. There was nothing that we could do, it was out of our hands. So as I addressed at the last meeting, I'll address it again since you're now here. Those are all the steps that we've taken to try and be a good neighbor.
Thank you.
I guess we missed our chance to talk to Eversource about it.
I know, the guy was sitting right here.
He's the abutist, so.
Yeah, he's not the guy.
But you could put us in touch with someone.
That's true, that's true. That's true.
I'm sorry, just a quick questions, if I may, would you mind coming back up? Unless I read your body language wrong, I think you indicated some non-agreement, I guess, with some of the statements about reaching out to you. Can you talk a little bit to that?
Statements about reaching out to us?
She was good enough to talk about how.
I have, the only thing, the only, the only correspondence I've had with Alex is one phone call I made to Real Estate Advisors. She answered the phone. I asked her about the tree. She said, "Call Eversource" because the wires are there illegally. And that's all she said. There was nothing, nothing else said to me.
And just once?
Just once, just once. No, you said, "Call Eversource, the trees are in illegally." Then I called the insurance person who had been, I've been talking to from our insurance company.
Your personal insurance?
Vermont, yeah, Vermont Mutual, that's the one that's insuring the outside of the house. And he said that he had contacted, he said that, that Mr., what he said, now this is insurance company. He said, "Mr. Cheney should have known about it, he should have been dealing with Eversource." I didn't know anything about what she just said before I heard her say it tonight.
All right, can I, can I just stop this discussion now? This really has nothing to do with.
No, I just want to make sure you understood, that's all.
Is this in conditions on the property that the fact is there are wires there illegally? That there was a dead tree that fell down, took some of the wires down? It's a problem for everybody, it's not a great situation.
It is a problem for us mostly because we're ending up paying for it.
Understood.
And, and it wasn't on our property and I don't feel that that's right. That, that we should be paying anything because the electricity was out. It took them all day to restore the electricity and it cost almost three thousand dollars.
Understood, understood. But the, the, also the facts are that the wires are on Mr. Cheney's property and whoever owned it for him illegally. There's no easements for the wires, they shouldn't have been there. Not that that's, you own the property, it's, you know, everybody, it's a screwy situation.
It was supplying electricity to my house, but there was nothing I could do about it.
Correct, correct.
Because I don't own that property, that it was on, the tree was on.
Correct.
And I didn't know anything about somebody trying to get, you know, asking for firewood and that's why it's been on so long. I knew nothing about that. I knew nothing about somebody trespassing. I didn't trespass, I didn't take firewood.
Understood. I think, I think we're talking about this way too long.
Yeah.
It's, it's a situation that's being corrected as we speak.
Yeah, but I didn't know that when I came up here a moment ago.
I appreciate that.
Because nobody contacted me or told me anything.
Okay.
Which I find troubling. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so Alex, please come back. Back to where we were, which is, I think is where we were, is at the last meeting, we resolved all the technical issues, we had a long discussion about aesthetics. What do people want to talk about as far as aesthetics go in this development? There's been discussion about a brick facade, there's been discussion about dormers, there's been discussion about all kinds of things. What's the, what's the pleasure of the board?
My, my pleasure is that on, and to adhere to site plan regulations and the intent of the site plan regulation that they do indeed should adhere to some aesthetic modifications to the building in order to be aesthetically pleasing to the area as Attorney Ratigan discussed in his letter.
Such as, let's not talk in, let's, let's throw some concrete ideas out there.
Such as dormers and, and brick facades on either end.
So you want dormers and brick facade?
Yes.
On both sides?
On both ends.
On both ends?
Both ends.
Both ends, okay.
Because that is what the abutters had asked for.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
Well, I think the neighbors, they spoke at the last meeting, made it clear that, you know, the neighborhood has a certain character that everybody seemed to, the opinion, the feeling I got from everybody was they wanted, they had some historical significance to the neighborhood and they wanted to maintain compatible look and design of the building. So I think that was made clear and evident to the board. What that translates, what that translates, what that translates into remains to be seen because, again, part of it is, you know, what do we have in place as far as regulations to enforce any of that?
The letter, the letter says what we have to do.
Go, go ahead, Rose, Diane.
No, I just wanted to mention that I did talk to Attorney Ratigan after I received his letter and I asked him how we might go about implementing this. And he had suggested that it be addressed as a condition of approval. And he thought that the planning board should be very specific as to what you would like to see in that motion. And in the spirit of just putting something on paper for discussion purposes, I have recommended a condition number ten, which is in addition to the list I provided to you last, at the last meeting on March fifteenth, with some language. And this is merely for discussion purposes and can be fine tuned as, as the board feels is appropriate. But I wanted to also look at how we're going to implement this. This is something that we want to, you know, have another meeting about, which would extend the review period. And I'm not sure that that's really in everybody's best interest. So I have drafted something that would make the decision sort of an administrative decision if the board felt comfortable with that for our review. And if you'd like me to read it, I can do that.
I would.
Okay, it's on page three of my memo. New recommended condition, it should be April twelfth, two thousand sixteen. That was a typo on my part, please forgive me. Number ten, the applicant to provide final building elevations and or perspective 3D drawings of all building facades pursuant to section four point one of the Town Site Review Regulations to show dormers, porches with doors and overhangs impediments, which was one of the options that was shown, and brick detailing so the structures will blend in with the architectural and historic character of the neighborhood. Such elevation shall be subject to review and approval by the town planner and building official prior to the signing of the final site plans and recording of the final site plans with the Rockingham County Register of Deeds and prior to the issuance of any building permits for this project. And this would be consistent, in my opinion, to section one point oh one, the purpose section of the Town Site Review Regulations, which are designed to quote unquote, promote the harmonious and aesthetically pleasing development of the town. and aesthetically pleasing development of the town and ensure visual harmony of the site with the surrounding neighborhoods." And that is my recommendation at this point.
Go ahead.
Diane, could you be more specific as to brick detailing? Would it be, I mean, all the abutters, the way the house is situated, that each end of it?
And if that's something that the abutters feel is appropriate and attractive, then that's fine. I guess my thought was just walling in. A facade with all brick really doesn't, for me, do a whole lot architecturally, and that maybe some of that can be achieved by having maybe some brick textured patterns, or maybe doing part of the facade with that, or, you know, developing some kind of a design theme. But I saw one rendering where the whole side of the building was brick, and that personally didn't do a whole lot for me. And I think that, you know, with some, a little bit of creativity and artistic design, it can probably, that goal can be achieved probably at a much lower cost to the applicant. So, those were my thoughts.
Well, I know the, I know, obviously, from my last meetings, that the abutters wanted some sort of brick. They liked the idea of the dormers. I thought at one point the discussion was either or, but, you know, if it's both, it's I guess the question is how, you know, are you guys okay with, like, what Diane just read, which basically lays out a groundwork, but makes it, you know, for Diane and Mike to decide what's acceptable?
You don't trust my judgment? No, I'm joking.
Hold on, please, please, hold on. That's fine. Either that, or we can, I mean, we can be very specific, say what we want.
I mean, I would like to, I personally, the planning board, with what's been going on, and even in the minutes, I mean, the statements and promises have been wishy-washy at best with this applicant, and I would like to see a rendering with what's going to look like on that building and have the abutters here to look at it, and I think that's our best bet. So, we could visualize it ourselves as the planning board to give a final approval to it.
But I think we need to give them direction of what we want. It doesn't do anybody any good for them to come up with a rendering with a bunch of stuff that we go, "We don't want any of that." I mean, I think we've talked about this enough that there's a pretty good consensus of it's brick and how much brick. I mean, I think the issue with the brick on the ends was the rendering we had had no windows, right? It was just.
They didn't want windows.
Right, right, understood.
Could Alex show us the renderings? I think we have a couple of.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have one new person here, and I don't know if everybody was at the last meeting.
But it was dormers and brick is what we were pretty much talking about, right?
Do you mind showing them?
I will show the renderings, but I would just like to put on the record that in the neighborhood, not all the buildings are brick. Some of them are brick, some of them are stucco, some of them are vinyl clapboard, just like what we have proposed. So, this is what we've come up with. We weren't sure what you guys were going to have for site review authority. And we agree with Diane that the brick doesn't look good on the side of the building for real estate value or for the value of the community. And we also, just for the record, would like to say that this site review authority has never been implemented for any other project except for ours, except on Route 108. This is brand-new to you. You said you didn't even know how to do it without talking to the planning board.
Every project since I've been here, and that's since 2006, we have asked for elevations, we have asked for consideration of aesthetics. We used to have an advisory heritage committee who would make recommendations. That was all part of our process.
And we have submitted renderings with our proposed elevations.
I haven't seen, you've never submitted them to the planning office so that they could be reviewed by the abutters?
They were here in the meeting.
Right, but they need to be part of the application, and that's.
That's fine. Why don't you show us what you have?
So that everybody knows what you're proposing.
I didn't bring a.
An easement, okay, that's fine.
I think that looks great. I really personally think that looks great, but that's my opinion.
We think this is going to be the best for the neighborhood for property values.
So, that's the first one.
This is, they're all the same.
Oh, you didn't bring the brick?
We did not.
Okay. The last meeting, we saw a very, kind of a basic vanilla box-type design that didn't have a whole lot of detailing. We saw that one, and then we saw a couple, I thought, that had brick facades on either end.
Right, so that was the old rendering. You asked us to make new renderings of what we were proposing to build, so what we're proposing to build. It's the same exact building, except that there was brick on.
On the end.
And it's actually just break out, but.
It's not the elevations 35 feet, right? It can't be higher.
Maximum height is 35 feet.
Maximum height is 35 feet.
And if you'd like, I can submit these to you.
If that's what you're submitting, I mean.
Is that what you're building?
At the last meeting, I didn't know what you were proposing, so I'm glad you came forward with something, Alex.
So, having seen that, what's everybody's thoughts on that?
Please.
Look, if the answer is, "We don't want to make a decision tonight," that's fine, but we need, I think we need to give them clear direction. But, so, having seen that, I mean, I don't think we should abdicate all authority to the abutters and say, "Whatever the abutters want is what we're going to make them do," because that's a, nothing against the abutters, that's a bad road to go down.
Should we have to give all authority to Mr. Cheney?
For everybody. Please, hold on, please, 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 please. If you're going to talk, you have to come up here, please. We haven't abdicated any authority to Mr. Cheney. What we're, what Diane just offered to do or suggested was that we give Diane and Mike, the code enforcement officer, the ability to decide what's acceptable. Now, we need to decide as a board, are we okay with that process or not? Or do we want to be more specific and say, "No, this is what we want?" I think it's fairly simple. All we need to do is decide what we want and tell them that's what we want, and make a decision based on that.
Right. That's what Radigan said, the more detail, the better.
Is that in this letter here, Diane, the last page from him?
No. Well, it was just a comment. I had, I got his letter, and I was looking to him for some direction on how we might implement his letter, and that's when we came up with the suggestion of the condition. And again, that's subject to your modification.
See, I personally, I don't have a problem with what Diane suggested, but just be aware that that leaves the possibility of the applicant coming to us and saying Diane and Mike are being unreasonable, or the abutters coming to us and saying Mike and Diane aren't making Mr. Cheney do anything. If we're very, very prescriptive on what we want, I think that's the best route.
It says here in his, the last page, it said, "The board's task would seem to require a depiction of all sides of the proposed building. Once the board is satisfied with what has been presented meets the standard, the board can condition any site plan approval. It may be inclined to grant set of elevations and so on."
Which is another.
Which, again, gets down to.
Yeah, are we happy with what we're seeing?
Are we happy with what we're seeing?
Now, what's going to be in the backside of that building? Is it windows in the backside of that? It must be. If you have no windows in the side, I'm sure there's windows.
I don't have a back rendering for you, because we were only required to bring a front one.
I think if we could just see an elevation drawing, do you know what an elevation drawing is? Yes, okay. As opposed to a 3D rendering, which is easier to prepare.
There's got to be windows and doors in the back. They've got to have windows. They've got to have a second egress, you know? Probably a sliding door in the back, or.
That's my understanding.
Probably a small deck or something in the back of these.
That there's a small deck with a sliding door to the backyard. It'll be the same color as the front of the building. There may be two windows on, two or three windows on the backside with the sliding window, with the sliding door.
Yep.
Leading out of the kitchen area.
If you want to speak, please, feel free to speak, but come up here.
I don't want to interrupt her at all.
Please come up here. That's fine, come on up.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, Alex said that the neighborhood is not all brick, and she's right, the whole neighborhood is not all brick. But the area where these condos are going to be, every building surrounding that area is brick. It's like a little, it's just like this, it's almost like there's this park, and it's all surrounded by brick, and it's almost like a community within itself. That's why we want, that's why we want brick. I don't see any brick on that at all, and I think that, I hope, that we will have some say in what's going to be in our property. No?
It's our decision. We're listening to you.
We're listening to what you're saying right now.
No, so I don't know. So, I just, you know, I'm hoping that before you make a final decision, that we will be, the abutters will be able to say, I mean, I'm the only abutter here, because the other two people that are usually interested couldn't make it today. But I'm really trying to advocate for some brick on the building, a brick facade, not a stucco with something that looks like brick, but, you know, a brick facade of some sort. You know, it doesn't have to be made of brick, but I know there's buildings that have this that look good, and it looked nice. That doesn't look like it will fit in with the neighborhood at all.
Okay, thank you for your position.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Neil.
You have another abutter that I think wants to speak.
Yeah.
No, I was just going to express that I think probably it would be handy, and I think the direction we're getting from the abutters is useful, and I think it would be handy to have some discussion where they could bring in brick elements into that design. And I think, you know, the board would, not to speak for the board, because I won't even be voting on that unless Amy's not here, but I think that that's where you're heading is, is to have, try to bring in some brick elements. I think it would enhance it, I think, and it probably, there's a way to bring in less brick but have more impact than putting two brick ends on it, I guess, as that said. So, I think if there could be an exploration of that and finish the elevations, that that would be a nice process. I don't know if that can work that way.
It can work any way we want it to work.
And to do that, and to show elevation, what is going to go on all four sides, like the letter required, I think, and be able to have the abutters here, and like you said, some materials.
I would be happy to work with Mike and have a, you know, meeting with Alex and abutters who are interested, and try to sit down at a table and do some brainstorming and look at some different options, and see if we can work it out that way. Is that something the board would advocate?
I'm fine with that, because I think we need to move it forward. This is a new direction we've gotten, and I know it wasn't, it's not really fair to Alex. She got this tonight, so she's not prepared to address a lot of it. But I think we also need to understand that, you know, ultimately, this is our decision, and Diane and Mike can work with the abutters and with Alex and come up with a solution. If they can't, we'll have to make a decision based on the facts we have.
Then we'll have to appeal it back to the planning board.
Maybe just people agree to disagree, and we'll have to say, "This is what we want," and move forward.
Well, so, let me understand, so, basically, do you expect the board to let Diane and Mike handle this with just what we've seen tonight, even though there's one abutter here that says that they would like to have more input with it? Or should the board see the renderings of all four sides, see some materials that could be used, and have them come up with a plan that the board can visualize and then approve?
Well, I think, I think that's correct, but I think it's going a slightly different way, is I think Mike and Diane, the abutters, and Alex can come up with that and say, "Here's all four sides of the building, here's what we've come up with, here's what in concept we've agreed with, and give it to us, and we can decide whether we're."
And give it to us, back to the, back to.
Yes.
Back to the planning board.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. As long as it comes back to here for us, oh.
Quite honestly, if, you know, the next meeting, if Diane says, "We've reached an agreement," the abutters say, "We like it," the developer says, "We're ready to do it."
Oh, absolutely. That's what I wanted to know, if it was coming back to us, so we can see a complete rendering.
Oh, absolutely, it's our decision to make. We're going to see it.
Absolutely.
We're going to see it.
So, basically, make a motion just to continue?
Yep.
So, Alex, more comment. Clarifying comment, are you making a motion to continue or to approve conditionally that Diane and Mike have oversight over the rest of the plan?
No. I wouldn't make that. I would want Diane and Mike to go.
I think it's a continue. I don't hear anybody willing to come up with.
How many times has our plan been continued?
I think that it will be continued, if we agree that this is a reasonable approach, then we would have to take a motion to continue it to the next meeting. And, you know, and that's with your consent as well as ours. I mean, the idea of the 65-day time clock is only to, a decision has to be made. It's not an automatic approval after 65 days.
No, I understand that.
So, we'd have to, as part of this process, we'd have to agree to the continuation.
If that's what the board chooses.
Alex, I think you made progress on the last drawing you showed us, because the last time, we weren't even, you know, there was a possibility of not even having dormers. And I think it's clear that what we're just, everybody is asking you to do is come back with some solid designs, show us the building from all four sides, give us some options, and understand that we want it to fit in the neighborhood.
Well, I completely understand what you're asking.
If you go back and you do that, and you bang it out, and you bring it before this board, I think there will be some consensus as to the direction it's heading in.
I understand what you're asking.
I think that's pretty clear, and you took a step in that direction tonight, but only one step, because you only showed us one side of the building.
I understand what you're asking for, but this is the fifth or sixth meeting that we've been at, that we've had to continue to. We had two CRC meetings in which we brought renderings for everyone to review and come to a decision for, and this is the final rendering that we're bringing, hopefully, and we are more than willing to work with the neighborhood. But I think to keep.
But it's a final incomplete.
Continuing until the abutters are happy isn't going to happen.
That's not where we're going, no. Nobody said we're going to continue. Hold on, hold on. We've never said that we're going to continue till the abutters are happy. This is a letter that's new to everybody, and it's changed the way we have to think about this. And if you don't want us to continue it, that's fine, we'll take a vote tonight. If you don't want us to continue, we can take a vote tonight, we can close the meeting, excuse me, and take a vote. So, you tell me what you want to do. At this point, personally, what's another month going to be?
I mean, we can't even build on the property, but I'm just saying, this has been, you know what I mean?
I understand the frustration.
There's a whole smaller property, we can't build, but it's been a very long process with a lot of time and money and effort put into it.
It has.
Every time I sit at a meeting, you know, there's, there's financial consequences and risk that goes into this project.
Understood, understood. This is a, this is a, this is a complete change of the way we've done business.
I think we're almost there. We were talking about, instead of having a solid brick facade on all four sides, we talked about doing some detailing and to come up with some pattern.
And I appreciate it, I understand that.
And you were nodding your head.
Yes, we were more than willing to help.
Personally, to me, is a compromise, and people, everybody has to compromise a little bit if we want to move this forward.
Completely agree.
Including the abutters. So, and I think I saw Gina snort that, yeah, maybe we could go along, so.
Please stand up at the microphone, please.
The more we can nail this down, the better, I think.
I know that, I understand her, Alex's concern about how long it's taking, but that's not what any of the abutters have ever said they wanted, that rendering.
Um, I don't know, excuse me.
Well, what I'm trying to say is the dormers, yes, the dormers, yes, and I wasn't at the last meeting, but I know that they wanted some brick in it, and there isn't any brick in that rendering.
Right.
And so, that's why I just want to make sure, because I know it's time and money for them, but it's our, it's where we live.
Understood.
And it's, it's how, what we have to deal with for the re, the rest of the ti, we live there.
And that's why we want to come to a compromise, that hopefully...
So that, I'm just saying, that's why we're being so picky about it, because it's where we live. We have to live, we have to live there, we have to look, look out the window and see that. So, so that's why it's, it's being so picky.
Understood.
Okay, thanks.
That's what the process is all about, is that, um, Alex, one second, there's an abutter I think who wants to speak, please.
Good afternoon. Tyler Jeffrey just moved to the neighborhood a few months ago. So I just wanted to ask you guys, so I'm assuming a lot of you are obviously from the area, how many of you have actually been to the neighborhood? Okay, so every single one of you have been to the neighborhood, okay. So, so you all understand, you know, what we're talking about, we're on the same page with that, right? So, obviously, you know, I see what you're saying with, that not all the houses in the area are brick, you know, but in that mini, I guess, neighborhood, um, you know, those are all brick, so I don't know, has anyone done any studies on the, I guess, the property values of, you know, the impacts of this? Because I, I heard her mention that, you know, the brick is gonna, uh, you know, not be a selling point, but for me, when I saw the property, I loved the brick. So, I think we need, um, we need to really clarify when we're, um, we're saying brick detailing. We, we definitely need pictures of what that entails, and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know exactly what that would look like, but...
Yeah, and I mean, I, I don't, I think, and, I mean, I think I can kind of speak for the, I should probably have said, I live at 2523 Cedar Street, both those units, so, kind of right behind those garages on the, on the property. So I think, you know, what, I know what I would like as an abutter, and I think what the other folks would like to see is, kind of what we're steering towards is, you know, a model of what this is actually gonna look like, maybe a little more detail with that and with brick, and what brick detailing means.
Yes, that's what we're heading towards.
That's what we were trying to, get an handle on that.
Yeah, and the other thing, is there anything stopping alternating the siding in the future, or is that, I mean, is, you know, if there, if there...
If it's approved for site plan, if, if there's a certain look approved through here, that look is in perpetuity.
Okay, so there's no changing it on the road?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to verify that.
No, I shouldn't say that. There's changing it, but, you know, if you change from one color to another color, that's talk to the billing inspector. If you wanna, if you, if they're gonna use brick, and then 10 years from now you want to get rid of the brick, that's something that needs to go through the planning board for a change, so it's like plan approval.
Okay. Um, and my last thing is, so, and I, I kind of brought this up, but has there been any property value studies for what the effect is on this unit going in? I mean, do we, do we know if that's gonna, because I'll, I'll tell you right now, I bought this property as, you know, an investment and because I love the area, you know, so, I mean, I think that's something we need to consider, because I'm hearing kind of both sides of it. I'm hearing some folks say that the brick is, you know, a deterrent. I know me personally, it was a selling point to me. I don't know how, you know, you folks feel about it, I mean...
Not up per view to assess real estate values.
Okay, but I think that would be an effect, you know, something that the abutters would consider.
Yes, but that's a materials thing, that's, you know, is brick more valuable than siding?
Is, is part of the initial process, the applicant had to get a variance from the zoning board of adjustment. And one of the criteria is whether or not properties adjacent are gonna be adversely affected by the proposal.
Like for future resale, that's why.
Right, well, and they're to consider a number of variables brought up at the public hearing. And let me just say that the zoning board went through that process, carefully documented, how it met each of those criteria are, and it was approved for the density, and it was appealed by the abutters, and it went to New Hampshire Superior Court, and the courts upheld the decision that the zoning board made. So it has been vetted through the court system.
Okay, so, um, yeah, pretty much, you know, I'm gonna leave it with you guys, but the only thing I know I personally would like to see is just, you know, a little more concrete evidence of what brick detailing is and an actual visual of it.
Understood, I think we're all at the same spot.
I think we're...
Alex, go ahead.
I'm willing to continue to the next meeting, provided that we get some direction on where you want us to go, so that we don't show up with another rendering that you guys say, no, I don't want that.
We can, we can continue, but I can't continue conditionally, because...
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is, are we gonna get some direction on what you want? Because if not, then we're gonna come back with the same rendering.
As far as I'm concerned, as far as I'm concerned, after this meeting, you, Diane, and Mike, and the abutters need to get together immediately and start the process of determining what it's gonna look like. And so that when you come to the planning board at the next meeting, all parties can come and say, we met, we kicked it around, you know, we don't quite like this, but it's okay, or we, you know, we all agree on this or whatever, but I understand where you're going. I agree with you, so that at the next meeting, we can say, here's the plan, and we can vote yes or no.
I have another question. Last time, we were asked to continue because a plan was submitted with not enough time for them to review the minor changes to it. So are we saying that we have to have this meeting with the abutters, myself, and Diane and Mike within the next week and a half, so that it can be submitted in time for...
The next meeting, if that's when you want your approval.
It needs to be here for the next meeting.
So, are you... Like five, maybe a week in advance, so we can get it out to the board members to look at. So that means everybody has to be willing to roll up their sleeves and work together to make this happen.
So I just wanted to say on...
And, and believing, my position is, and I don't, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, if you guys come in here, everybody comes in here next month and says, we can't agree on anything, I'm more than willing to make a decision.
Okay.
I'm more than willing to give you direction. This is what I'm willing to approve or disapprove, and I, or I guess everybody else here is, is something. We've talked about it enough, and if you guys can't agree, we will decide, and people can like it or not, but we will decide.
Okay, then I will agree to continue, on behalf of Real Estate Advisors.
Is there a motion to continue?
I was, I wanted to make a motion to accept the new recommended condition, point number 10.
Not until after, no, we don't have to.
That'll be part of a motion for approval.
For the next meeting.
And we can fine tune that perhaps after our meeting, because some of those things, I think we know we, we have some consensus on, the dormers.
Okay, is there a motion to continue for our next meeting?
Diane has something to say. I think we should listen to the planner when she puts her hand up.
Yeah, I just, just, what I've heard tonight is people want to know what the brick detailing's gonna look like.
Yeah.
I didn't hear anyone say they don't like the idea of the dormers, or the, the nice porticoes that you have over the doors. I think everybody thinks that looks nice, and I think we're all in agreement that we don't want just a brick facade on either side, because that's really not gonna be very pretty to look at, I'll be honest. So we need to, and I guess my second comment is, do you work with an architect, Alex? You've done some wonderful renderings, 3D renderings. Did an architect help you prepare those? And do you have an architectural person?
Paul LeBeau made these plans. I can make renderings, Paul can make renderings, Paul LeBeau.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, but he's an architectural designer, so he might have some...
He made these plans.
He's done a great job. I think they're wonderful, I really do. I think they're very attractive. So what I was gonna suggest is maybe Paul could sit at the table with us, and if he's an architect, he knows what materials that are out there and what detailing might look good to, you know, carry forward this theme that we're trying to set forth here. I think that would be really helpful, if Paul doesn't mind joining us.
I'm sure he won't.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Our next meeting is May 10th, second Tuesday.
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to continue this application?
It's five days before my wedding.
And you graduate, too.
Until May 10th.
You guys would be actionized to...
Until May 10th, you need a date cert.
You will be.
Make a motion to continue this meeting to May 10th for Real Estate Advisors, in continuation of a public hearing for an application for site plan review at 1, uh, Grape Street, Taxman U2, Lot 206 in the R3 Zone. The proposal is to add four unit condominium buildings with related parking to the property.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry to占用 your space.
There's been a second, now, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you again. Next month, we shall see you, see you again. Thank you.
Feeling better?
Um, we're gonna have to schedule it based on availability. We'll send an email to you folks, yes.
All right, next on the agenda is, is, Matt is gonna be here at 8:30, so I, um...
Oh, it was Ezra coming in, I thought it was Matt.
So, Rosie, I want to take the step, maybe we should start talking about, just in the essence, issue of saving time, design review?
Yes.
We had the discussion last time, it's on the agenda. The last meeting, there certainly weren't a lot of planning board members jumping up and down to volunteer. I understand, it's a, it's a time-consuming thing. Peter was kind enough to actually do some research, though, and I'm gonna pass around some design guidelines from Meredith. The issue is, or one of the issues is that these design guidelines look pretty practical. They range from, you know, this thick to Salem, New Hampshire, has what, 200 pages? You know, how detailed do we want to get? So I pass those around for everybody to look at.
You don't have copies for each one?
No, I just got it this evening, so, we'll get your copies, we'll get, we'll get copies.
Oh, super, yeah, pop it in the mailbox, yeah, great.
And there's another one, too, Peter, that you, another example, I think.
I actually, I just kind of did that quick spur of the moment, I actually found that several good ones.
Good.
Okay.
So, I, I'm, I'm willing to spend a little time on that.
Good.
Because I don't think it's gonna be as hard as it, everybody's cracking it up to be.
No, and I think, too, especially with the letter from the attorney's office, I mean, just with what we have now, we, we do have, you know, something that we can, we can use in just about any application that comes before us, but in order to continue, I mean, I, I think, as you know, we already have the architectural review, uh, 3.21 that we discussed, just along Route 108. And Diana, I, I just thought if we utilize this, part of this language, in conjunction with what John wrote, I, I think, without being too onious and getting into the weeds too much, I mean, we can review this just the same, but if we just, if we just eliminated the, the section of what we have already to start with some language, and then we can work on it from there in conjunction with John's letter and what Peter gave to us, we have something to start working with. It, it would be just to take out the section about the modifications along Route 108, and to change the appearance of the town be perceived as an attractive commercial and residential environment, which reflects and complements its heritage and so forth. And it just has a very minimal language as to what's allowed and not allowed along 108, and then we could add to it from John's letter and whatever else we feel and what Peter has submitted.
No, I just think, given, after reading the, the Radigan letter, that I think it becomes very important that we do have specificity within these documents, because for any developer to come here and leave it just to the subjectivity of what a board member or the majority of the board likes, don't likes, wants to see, would rather see, I think, I would think that from a development perspective, it would be very difficult to do business in this town, because they never know what the flavor of the board is going to be relative to design. So I think, given Radigan's letter, we need to have specificity in our documents. It's very unlike stormwater management, right? We have black and white, things that we can waive, okay, but it's black and white. If the developer meets those, you know, those specific regulations, we as a board can't say, no, just because we don't like your plan, we can't approve it. You know, I think, I think we need to go both ways on this and look at it from, you know, the applicant's and the landowner's point of view as well, so...
I think we need to be very specific.
I would be going to more specific documentation.
Diane? Just an example of that, and this kind of is a segue to what Matt's gonna be talking about. We have this zone currently out on Route 1, 152, the B3 Zone, and it allows a wide range of commercial and industrial uses, but there's no criteria by which the planning board would approve a special use permit. It's very, very vague in general, and because of that, we haven't had any takers. Nobody has come forward with a specific proposal, because it's not clear what the planning boards and the towns' intentions were. So I think that's a really good point, Val, that we need to, you know, have, have a little more specif, specificity. I can't even say the word, thank you.
Rosie, from a process standpoint, go ahead.
But, but, but we need to work through, and I think we need to look at different models. How are we gonna administer this thing? Is it gonna be a planning board function? Are we gonna have a separate architectural review committee, which Concord has, by the way? Or are we going to, you know, do it through zoning, and how specific can it be? And I, I learned from the planning director in Salem that, you know, they initially wanted to have design regulations, and they got down to the end of the process, and they didn't have the public's, or the political support to adopt them as regulations, so they were adopted as guidelines. And if you look at the Salem example, it's all recommendations, and it's a 200-page document, it's very detailed, was prepared by a landscape architect and an architect. So, I mean, I think we need to think through how we want to administer this.
Just a question on that. Is it 200 pages because they have design regulations by zone?
No, it's because it addresses a whole range.
Because Durham has 37 pages, but it addresses five separate zones.
Yeah, this is actually a really, if you look at the Salem regulations, it's a good primer for anyone who wants to learn about design review, because it covers all aspects of it, from, you know, curving and stormwater to signage, and so it's a very, very comprehensive, but it doesn't have teeth, because it says, is recommended.
Right.
Okay.
Well, from a, from a process standpoint, Rosie.
So, there are different models, I guess this was the point I wanted to make.
So maybe, you know, S...
I think that perhaps you, and if Peter has some time, if there's any other volunteers, I would suggest that maybe you get together as kind of a subcommittee and come up with, you know, you can, it sounds like Peter's...
Ezra was.
And Ezra was, too.
I'd be able to join any meetings after May 13th.
Okay, so, to put together kind of a, you can research other towns, what you like, what you dislike, whatever, and, you know, keep us informed, but maybe, you know, come to us every once in a while and say, here's where we are. I, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to have a three-person subcommittee, do a lot of work, spend months and months on something, and come to the planning board and have all of us sit there and go, this is terrible. You know, I mean, we need communication back and forth.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So that we're all, so we know what we're expecting, you know, and we can give you direction, so you can shape the, the regulations or whatever they turn out to be appropriately. We also need to think about what the area of impact is.
It's the entire town, just like John's...
But, wait a minute, wait a minute, understood, understood, but wait a minute. I have no interest, and I would expect that 95% of the taxpayers, or 99% of the taxpayers in this town, have no interest in telling somebody who wants to build a single-family house what his house needs to look like.
Well, the planning board has no authority over single-family duplexes.
But what about a subdivision?
That's a good point. That's not site plan, though.
Right.
John does say, you, planning boards have the authority to consider statistics prior to subdivision.
Yeah.
Do we, I mean, are we gonna set regulations up that you need, you know, a lot, everybody knows...
All ranches?
All sub, a lot of subdivisions that's designed without houses...
Right.
...in place.
Yeah.
I mean, I certainly don't disagree with multifamily, but I, I draw the line at single-family. I have no interest in telling any single-family...
It would have to be, anything that's subject to, comes under site plan review, which we already have.
Site plan review, not subdivision.
Site, I agree with that. Okay, that's good, good, good point. So, we willing to, Rosie, move forward with that?
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, should the, the planner, though, use this as a basis, and then we can work off this, because this would at least give the planning board something to work on and to maybe get it posted for us to discuss a little bit, to see what we like here and what we don't like.
I would think the committee would want to review other town models and bring to the board what the committee is proposing, and you may want to start with that as a committee.
Yeah, and I...
To fit our town. I mean, Salem's nice, you can read it, but this is Newmarket, it's not Salem, it's not Concord.
I, I think it's...
It's good references.
Yes, I think a sensible approach is just to look at what some community's done. There's a very good one for Dover that I saw, well, I didn't go through it in detail, but, you know, Dover has done it, a couple of the towns have done it. You take a half a dozen of those, you look at it, and said, this seemed to have made sense. You make a couple of phone calls, say, has this worked for you, or where's the stumbling block? And then you, you have something to report back. If you go, if you have six of them, and you call everybody, and they said, it never worked for us, it was a horrible idea, the light bulb might go off, right?
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
That's it.
So do you guys want to just get together after the meeting and...
Sure.
Get a schedule, whatever, and whatever works for you guys, obviously, and we'll just start moving it forward. To kind of answer your question, Rosie, where you were going, Diane and I had kind of this discussion a little earlier. She, obviously Diane's doing a lot of things. This is something that I don't think she's gonna be able to spend a lot of time on. Certainly, she'll give you whatever support, if you need, you know, back office help from Sue, or getting copies and doing things like that, but I don't think Diane's gonna be able to take the forefront of this endeavor. But certainly be willing to give her all the support you can.
That's right.
Right, I mean, she's got the dam and everything else that's going on.
Five new ordinances.
So throughout that process, you've got to create a clear understanding of the administrator's process, or the appeals and waivers.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be part of it, too.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll take it, that approach, and whenever the, the committee feels appropriate, you know, at any interval, you want to come, and maybe we'll just keep it on the agenda as a discussion point on every month, and if you have something to update us on, great, and some information to give us to review, great, if not, you know, we'll just go to the next month until you have some, some information.
Sounds good.
All right, sounds like a plan?
Let me know when those meetings are.
All righty.
But if you have more than three people...
And, um... Well, if you have more than three people, we have to have formal notice and minutes, and that adds to the administrative...
Correct.
And has to be posted.
Correct.
And these three posted.
Very good. Very good.
All righty. All righty, I see Matt is here.
Hi, Matt.
Oh, it's going to be early, apparently not.
This is, we've actually scheduled this appropriately. Something didn't work right. So for those of you who don't know, Matt, come on up.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Yep.
We are ready.
Excellent. And I hope you all have copies because I may or may not have forgotten my copies in my office when I was hurrying out the course today.
Matt, before you start, just for the people at home who may not know, this is Matt Sullivan from Stratford Regional Planning Commission. Matt is here to discuss future land use chapter of the master plan. Welcome, Matt, it's been a while, how you been?
It has been a while. I'm good, how are you all? Hopefully well. So I wanted to quickly provide an overview of the process thus far in the future land use chapter. It's actually been, I think, about four or five months in process, bless you. Four or five months in process with a few subcommittee meetings in the process of developing this. This is really the second iteration, I would say, or second draft of the chapter. But with that said, there was significant work done between the first, when the first draft was developed and when the second draft was actually released to the subcommittee, just, I think, about two or three weeks ago. So this has gone through a decent amount of revision. As a general comment, I guess, about revision, this is actually a much more specific document in the first draft, and we actually removed some of that language and softened some of it. And that's really what you're looking at in the second draft here. And I guess what I'll do now is do a quick overview and go page by page as I usually do. And I hope that you have a copy of the future land use map in front of you as well. And if not, I can definitely pass that along later after the meeting, but it might be good.
I've got a couple of extras. That's what it looks like.
And just to sort of, I think, keep that in mind as we go through the different sections.
Are you doing, are you proposing to do a general overview? Or we're going to go through the document page?
I was going to do a general overview and then touch quickly on a couple of things I think we wanted to discuss tonight, and then accept comments as however you guys want to do.
Okay, just because I have editorial stuff by each page.
Okay.
About how you want to do that. They didn't get it. But that's okay.
You want to, do you want to make a copy? We'll give it to them after the meeting? Or do you want to go as he goes page by page?
They should be discussed.
Discuss, okay. Why don't we go as he goes page by page?
Sure.
I think that'd be better because if anyone has comments on an individual page, let's get them and not come back to it.
Yep.
Have it in writing in front of us for us to look at.
We have this.
But you said there was an editorial that's.
No, no, there's just some comments is.
She has comments.
Oh, okay.
Her comments.
Okay, is everyone ready?
Ready.
Yep.
All right, so we'll skip the first two pages, the, the cover and the table of contents. So we'll start on page three with the background. This is just a general background of sort of the statutory requirements of having a land use chapter in a more general sense. And then below that, a discussion of the process behind this chapter, including the recommendations that came out of the economic development committee and the work with John Connery and Peter Quest, the vision exercise that was done last year, and then some work of the future land use committee over the last four to five months, as I mentioned before. So just a brief background there. Any?
So I think on the very first sentence, because we're talking to build upon the efforts of the 2013 existing land use, I'd like to include in there the 20, what was, for the economic development chapter? Because so much of this content is coming out of that.
Okay.
So that should be added.
Yeah, I don't have the date right with me, but I think it was 2009 maybe, or.
I can grab the date, yeah, that's.
Most of this is coming out of that. I think we should reflect that, right, as well in that first sentence.
Okay.
And then, under economic development committee, that last line, I'll just read it. It's intended to give the development of the future land use chapter and future modifications to the zoning ordinance. So future should be added there?
Future modifications to zoning ordinance?
Correct, so this is a planning document with the idea of making modifications in the future.
Yes.
And I'm only making these comments because I'm really hoping that the planning board will push this through in a final form to public hearing.
Rosie?
A question, though. Everything listed here, the future land use chapter 15, 2013 existing land use and the vision chapter and all that, that has, that has gone through all the ramifications of the committees, the public hearings, and basically been approved.
These are adopted.
Those are adopted, yes.
Has the EDC chapter been adopted?
Oh, yeah, that was the first one.
The original one that we did, that was 2008, 2009, that was adopted. It's chapter six of the master plan.
And then the EDC was formed? The committee was formed out of that chapter? And then that, the committee met for a few years and brought the information in, which is part of this.
But the EDC, the latest work done by the committee for the EDC, that has not been vetted and approved.
No, that's the committee. I'm talking about the master plan chapter.
The master plan chapter that was approved by the, the planning board.
Okay. So it's something that's been approved, it's not something that a committee has met?
No, no, the chapter.
It has been formally adopted by the planning board.
Yeah, all right, okay.
Anything else on page three before we move on to page four? Okay. This is our first specific recommendation here, starting with the RCPD. Now, this residential coastal protection district is really intended to ensure the protection of environmentally sensitive areas around the Great Bay. That's the general intent of it. You can see some more specific language below. And then we did, as part of our first meeting, I think, of the subcommittee, we did identify the general area where this RCPD would actually be placed within the community. And you can, again, see that on the future land use map. Any specific questions on this?
Just this.
Yes. Hold them by 17.
And this will be posted, correct, Diane, including the map?
Yes. For the public hearing, we have it in there.
And the map will have different text, I guess, is that?
It will have a key or something.
Like right now, it has, this is just kind of, just to see it, is that?
Yes.
The boxes, okay.
Yeah. Anything else on that page? Any comments, questions? Okay. Moving into page five, the CCRC overlay district, one that you're probably fairly familiar with based on past discussions. This is the first page where there's actually an item that was identified by the committee that might be worth discussing. It's really the last section that is highlighted on the page, starting with, for instance, so it's, "For instance, due to the high density associated with a CCRC, all units within any CCRC development should be required to be serviced by municipal sewer and water, unless it can be determined that all or parts of the proposed CCRC development can be adequately serviced by centralized onsite wastewater treatment facilities, which in no manner impact the municipality's municipal drinking water supply." So a little typo there. And I believe the discussion at the land use committee, future land use committee, was really about whether or not centralized facilities would be accepted by the planning board at a later date in time, or whether all of these CCRC developments would require provision of municipal sewer and water.
And I think the concern was because there's an aquifer protection.
Mm-hmm.
Only applies to B3.
Correct.
That's right, yeah.
So the committee was divided on this?
Yes.
So that's why we highlighted it? To come to the board for further discussion and consensus.
Because.
Go ahead, Rosie.
Even the senior center down on Wadley Falls, when Al Dixon was here, he, we had town water that went up so far. But he had to put a pumping station in because in order to put that facility there, you had to have water and sewer. And I don't know the reason behind that. Is it, is it a state statute that these facilities have to have that?
No.
For the elderly?
No, that was for density.
I think they did it for density because they couldn't fit a septic on the site to, to, to work for the number of units they were proposing. So they ran the sewer to the pump station.
All right, I thought it was a mandatory situation that they had to have sewer and not because of the site restrictions.
Because of the funding, the federal funding?
I don't, I think they had to, they had applied for federal funding.
Yeah, he got a grant for that.
CDBG, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, yeah. And also, I mean, right now, I think the only area that we have designated is the B3 area. And we had the Henry Dufresne's, I'm not pronouncing it correctly, report regarding the sensitivity to that area. And I would not be in favor of having any onsite wastewater treatment facilities in that area whatsoever. It should be all public water and sewer.
And I personally agree. I don't know if we have any onsite centralized systems. We might have them in the mobile home parks in town or the manufactured housing parks. But I really think, given the vulnerable nature of the aquifer and the close proximity, that any kind of density of this nature really needs to have, be tied into waters. Like water and sewer, and that will protect the town's interests as well.
Exactly.
How much of this area has water and sewer, or sewer?
I don't think any, yeah, it would have to be extended.
In order to build one, the sewer line would have to be extended.
What's the closest?
It's about a mile.
So, I mean, I mean, I think we're, we're proposing something that is dead on arrival. And nobody will ever build anything in there because you can't, you know, you can't.
Well, it's going to be a matter of, you'll have to develop the, we'll have to develop an ordinance relative to density that is going to attract a developer to do a CCRC and that has enough profitability to it that they will extend the line. That's what, that's what will happen with this.
I mean, water goes up.
Or that the town is going to extend the sewer line because we look at it as a town, as an economic development, you know, project. And therefore, if, you know, if we build it, they will come.
But for, but practically speaking, I understand what you're saying, and that's the goal, practically speaking, to extend the sewer a mile, you'd have to have a density that this town would never go for. You'd have to have hundreds of units, hundreds of units. Putting a sewer line in for a mile is.
Well, we had the development.
Multi-millions of dollars.
We had that development, came in here and already briefly spoke to the point of, you know, that's the number one potential showstopper is the cost of that.
The number of units they would need to justify it.
Yes, right, yes.
And then phasing it in. So the other danger there is you're phasing it in because you got to start accounting for the cost of eventual hookup to the water and sewer.
Right, but if you can offset that cost, does it make sense for the town to participate?
Well, but there might be.
Yes, I agree.
With all the tie-in fees.
I mean, if this is being packaged as an economic development project, and you have a developer who's willing and ready to go, perhaps there might be some federal funding that could come to the air to make it economically feasible. And there's a number of programs, economic development administration funding, CDBG. I mean, it depends upon the clientele that's being served. But, you know, it can, it is possible that there could be some funding opportunities. But I think it has to be town public water and sewer as opposed to offsite requirements if you're talking that kind of density.
What if? Well, I would say, I don't mind having this in the, personally, in the master plan. What if there's ever the potential in the future that the Macintosh well is like, that's our source of water? And this no longer becomes? I mean, I don't know, I'm not in on that loop.
Nope, it's still.
Will this always be our drinking water supply?
It's still an aquifer and it still should be protected, whether it's.
Well, I'm not saying that we do anything. I mean, I think the language here is quite specific, which it specifically states, which could in no manner impact the municipality's municipal drinking water supply.
No, we, there's no.
I mean, Spruce Woods is on Durham's water supply. I mean, it's literally right next door to it. And that is all, you know.
We also have an interest, we have people who have wells, private wells in that area as well, and we want to protect their interests, not just protecting the towns.
If Durham wants to chance that, that's up to Durham. But as far as I'm concerned, water is a, you hear all these things in lead. I hear that UNH has got high lead contents up at the university in their water. You've heard of everything going on with, with everything. And I think primary concern for any town should be to do whatever we can to protect our drinking water, period. I don't care what Durham's done, doesn't mean we have to do it.
If this is an economic development incentive, then we would, you know, we would have to figure out how to make it economically feasible.
Right, but not by allowing.
Because otherwise, nothing will get, still get developed.
That's my point.
The conservation committee should work with all these organizations to buy that type of property because I would tell you, nothing would be able to be developed up there. And down the road, you would see a lawsuit coming from the owners for all those properties because you're holding their hands, saying you can't do a darn thing with that property because no one's going to come in there with that type of cost. So if the town wants to put this in, that's fine, then the town should come up and buy that, those properties from those homeowners and businesses, bottom line. If that was so important to the town, they would come up and buy that property, those properties. I own one of those properties, I'll tell you that right now, so I'm not, I'm being open and honest. But that's what you're doing, and that's what you're going to see happen.
Or what will happen is.
Developers will not come in.
It will get rezoned just to single-family. And every, all the single families will be on well and septic.
Yep.
I don't, we have to, we have to figure out some way to make properties economically viable. We know the way they're zoned now has not happened. And when was it rezoned? 20 years ago?
I don't think it was that long.
No, about 14, I think about 14 years ago. And I don't even know that the, the study that was done up there, if they would even allow septic up there for single-family homes.
Well, they would allow septic for industrial, commercial, and what it's zoned for now. Anything built up there now under the current zoning would be on septic.
Right, yeah.
And it's three.
And we can't, as a planning board, say, oh, no, you can't build on that land because you want a septic.
And that's, my point is just that we have this in here.
We're not saying that. You want to provide a density bonus.
I'm just saying, I think the planning board, there's this.
Think about the incentives to make it happen.
Unintended consequences. If we're saying it's only water and sewer, then we need to be developing ordinances out of this master plan that is going to allow that to be developed as a CCRC with enough density or enough funding, however, if it's public-private, in order to have it developed that way. And I just want the planning board to understand that it's like, oh, yeah, we'd like to do it, but if there's another, how many years where it doesn't get developed? What have we done as a board? I think we've done a disservice to the town.
If I ask a question about, about that, because I think, you know, it's, it's hard. The language here of saying that it, that it cannot impact the drinking water supply is, I don't know how, how certain the science is around is to say, turn that into a number, to turn that into a specific density that meets that requirement. Certainly, we know that municipal water and sewer would meet that requirement. We don't have hard numbers about what kind of density would be required to make that economically viable. So, so we're kind of making a, trying to debate this issue without having those two numbers available to us, which is, I think, of a bit of a challenge. You may have to, I mean, the next step after this is to try to turn this into specific zoning recommendations. So I think you can maybe take a first stab at it in the, in saying that, you know, maybe you put it in there, as Diane said, that it's going to be with municipal water and sewer, using language around that with the expectation that you'll start to come in through the process with some more specificity around what that looks like. And if it, if it looks totally infeasible to do that, then you've, then you've got to have in mind that you're going to adjust in some way. Maybe that's the way forward.
But if it's in the master plan, we can't adopt ordinances that are contrary to the master plan.
What was that again?
If it's in the master plan, we can't adopt ordinances that are contrary to the master plan.
Yeah, I don't.
We can only adopt ordinances that are consistent with the master plan.
That seemed like the, though, when I said, do it first with the municipal water and sewer in there, that you would attempt to make those ordinances work. Attempt to find an economic way for, Diane spoke of the possibility of federal grants. So if you were going to do that, then you would, you would create the master plan with that language, with the idea of moving it, then maybe you have to amend the master plan later if you can't do it.
Yep.
So we should poll the board?
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, because we're trying to get to a final-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this, this actually says, you know, should be water and sewer unless a centralized system can be shown that it won't impact the drinking water supply, which is a high threshold-
Right.
To me.
To me. However, in New Hampshire, all septic systems or centralized systems are approved by the state.
So, the town doesn't have any real authority over them?
The state has no authority over them, so that's another-
Well, the town has no authority.
Correct, correct. Which is, kind of makes it another, there's another wrinkle into it. But I, I think this is, and I understand the concerns, but I think we're, we're trying to fit something in here that will never happen.
We, we don't know that, we haven't looked into it.
We don't.
We didn't look into funding or, or densities or to, to make it viable.
Understood. And that's, and absolutely, that's the next step. I'm willing to go forward with it like this.
I'm not-
See what happens.
To, what, to keep the centralized onsite water treatment?
So, getting rid of unless on, is that what you're suggesting?
I, I, I think the consensus is kind of that we don't want that centralized onsite wastewater treatment. We want it to stay only with municipal water and sewer.
Right, so that was what I was-
I think that's what Roseanne is saying.
That's what Roseanne is saying.
We don't know if that's the consensus.
Right.
And that's why we're trying to come to figure out where the board is.
I'm, I'm saying I do not want onsite wastewater treatment facilities, I think it should stay with municipal water and sewer only to protect our drinking water.
So, who else feels the same way?
Who, who, yeah, so, what's everybody else think? That's Peter.
Oh, well, I mean, I think you threw an interesting wrench in the works where you said the state would have approval if it was something else. And I don't know enough about that to speak fully educated on it, so I think that's a good point, though.
Well, the state approves all septic systems.
Right.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's what it would basically be.
Right.
So, now, like I, you're, you're basically handing that off.
Yes. Well, and don't, and don't, you know, don't misunderstand, every sewer system leaks.
Right.
Every sewer system leaks.
Not to the degree of having many, many, a large, many, a large septic systems. I wish everyone on the board, before they make a decision, would read the Henry Dufresne's report on that area, and it's very specific. They didn't even want excavation on there. It's very, very specific and it's very integral to the protection of our water in Newmarket. So, before anybody diverts to allowing septic systems, educate yourself.
Well, and we're not saying that at this point, we're discussing whether we even want to allow that or how we're going forward. Dale, what's your thoughts?
I, I think, I think I'm in favor of taking out the, taking out the municipal at this point. I, I, because I just feel like we don't-
The septic.
The septic.
The centralized onsite.
On site. I'm sorry, I said municipal, I meant septic. Just, just because I think it would be sort of aspirational to go for that first and also just so that you would have some more detail about what, what the town's positioned on. If, if we thought we were going to open that up to somebody to put septic systems and give them a density bonus for that, then we really want to know what we've, what we're about at that point. I'm not sure we have that yet.
Jane?
I agree with Dale.
Janice?
I have a question, but one with this going into effect because if this-
This is a master plan, nothing goes into effect until an ordinance is developed.
And when would the ordinance be developed? Because that's the point, that's where, what, where I'm hung up beyond because right now, if somebody had a piece of property up there and they wanted to build a house, and if it went through, you're saying they can't, they only-
No, they can't build a house.
They can't build a house there.
You can't build a house there. Residential is not allowed.
No, you, yes, you can, you're wrong. I can build a house on my property that I own up there. You're allowed to build a house if you're operating out of there, just like the filling pit, by, by filling pit, you can put a house up there. So, what I'm saying is someone wanted to do that to their property because it's an asset, like an accessory to the business, they won't, they would have to put a septic system in.
Well, we, we're talking about building an industrial building up there and put in a septic system today.
Correct.
We're talking about CCRCs, we're not talking about single-family homes. We're not talking about duplexes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
We're talking about-
Because there are people who-
Currently, you're allowed to put septic systems up there.
That's right.
Currently, somebody could put a hundred thousand square foot industrial building out there with a septic system.
Correct.
Right.
This isn't changing that, this is looking towards changing that in the future.
Or providing an option to this type of development in the future.
I don't believe even, I remember-
I would only if the town turned around and changed their views and helped these people, if they're putting restrictions on people's properties and taking away some of their rights because they're paying the taxes on these properties, the town's not paying the taxes on the property, then the town's better turn around and start thinking, well, if we're going to do that, then we're, the town can, the town's a real estate market for who they want to be in, in town, you know? And they, I think if this is so important to the town and if they want to have-
Janice, we are the town, this is a planning board decision, nobody else besides us. This is us. We can rip this up and throw it away if we want it.
In my hearing, you said that maybe the town needs to make some investments in economic development and help finance the cost of water and sewer to that area-
And then I'd be awful keeping it.
To help facilitate the development, so it's not a burden on one particular landowner or developer.
I'm okay with taking-
But the question right now is, from the master plan perspective, would you leave it in or take it out? As-is or take out that?
I'm okay with taking it out, I, I'm okay with taking it out.
You want to take out, you want to keep in the-
So, we're going to take it out.
We're going to take out everything from unless.
Unless.
Where are we going to go?
All right, Matt.
The only other thing I had on that page, Matt, was at the very top-
Yes.
First paragraph-
Mm-hmm.
End of that first sentence would be the addition of the wording, "In a viable economic use of underutilized land." That was real, that is really the purpose of why the EDC had recommended this.
Sorry, Val, which section?
On the very first paragraph.
In, in, on this page?
Yep. At the end of the first sentence.
After master plan?
Nope, end of the first sentence, did I not read the whole, oh, sorry, second sentence, second sentence. Findings of the study indicate Newmarket, like many communities across here, should proactively plan for an increase in older age cohort individuals. Sorry, third sentence. Continuing care retirement communities are one solution to the anticipated increase senior population and a viable economic use of underutilized land would be the addition to that.
And that's based on the findings of John Connery's reports?
Correct. So, again, it gives purpose to rezoning this particular area.
Yep.
Apologize, my print is so little, I can't see the periods.
We need to get your big magnet on.
No, I need new glasses.
Okay. One moment here to get these notes down. Moving on to the sixth page, the ALO district, nothing identified here by the committee for discussion, but any comments generally?
Right over here.
I'm good.
The fourth paragraph down should say, "In developing," not development.
Yep.
Where are we? Assistive living aid.
Page six.
ALO, okay.
Fourth paragraph down, it should be, "In developing-"
Yep.
-zoning for the district.
No, great. Page seven, the design standards overlay district, sort of runs right down 108, all the parcels adjacent to it. Any discussion here?
I think what I heard earlier tonight is that we may not want to limit it to just room one away.
No, we don't want to limit it to 108.
Maybe we want to look at it for all multifamily housing and-
Commercial.
Commercial, industrial uses.
Not, so.
So, not just limit it to-
And 108? So, is that an and operative there or?
You're just saying designed standards, not as an overlay district, so you would-
Just say designed, yeah, as Val said.
I guess the one question would still be, though, if we wanted to have design standards for the town, but have something kind of separate and different for the 108 board or-
Right, because it's the idea of a gateway.
And we could do that, and we talked about that at one point, having a gateway district and having more detailed design standards for those areas.
I would propose we leave this as-is.
Leave it as just an overlay district?
And then add a second one?
Or this section, because this is only applies to this 108 overlay district.
Yep.
Okay.
And add an additional section.
Because when we start doing an ordinance for maybe a gateway, which we've discussed, that could have specific ordinance issues that can't be waived by the planning board along 108.
Right.
Where it's like plan review, we can waive it.
Diane, could I discuss with you offline about what exactly that district or the other design standards might look like?
I don't, I don't think we know.
I don't think we've thought that at this point.
Okay. Would that, would that make it into this draft or?
No.
No.
No, I would just-
No.
That's a topic for another day.
And we're, and we're talking on that site plan, where the master plan is really mostly driving our ordinances, which is what we really need to get to.
Right.
So, I mean, but like you said earlier, Val, if, if it's not in here, you, you can't create an ordinance. So, by putting just an overlay district with 108, are we limiting ourselves to?
No.
I think we want a general- Probably a conversation-
I think we want a general discussion of design standards and say, as a subset of that, the town plan would may consider having more restrictive or different design standards for different geographic areas in the town, including the gateway and 108 or downtown.
I would propose we do nothing with this because what we're just talking about relative to the, the design review regulations in our site plan review is coming out of Attorney Radigan's memo providing, which gives the planning board the right to adopt those.
Right.
Right? Out of the master plan, I believe, is coming, the next step is specific ordinances, which the planning board doesn't have the right to waive. So, the, the committee-
Are you talking about zoning? Are you talking about zoning?
Right, zoning ordinances. But I, so-
Well, we're talking about with the, the design review is a, is a process that we can control, we can adopt them and we can, we can enforce them. This is something that, that is a zoning, ordinances come from this. So, two completely different apples and oranges. Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to suggest is it might be less confusing moving forward, even if you had another catchy name to call other than the design standards overlay district.
Like a Route 108 gateway district?
That might be better language because the design standard, if you're talking about that for what?
Yeah.
And Rosie's working on it. And for this overlay district, it's going to be really confusing.
108 gateway or?
108 gateway district.
Corridor and gateway.
Corridor district, yeah, because it is, will be the whole.
Yeah, 108 corridor, I like that, overlay district.
And gateway, because we want to promote our gateways.
Wait, so what's the final name?
Corridor.
Route 108 corridor.
I don't know. The Route 108 corridor overlay district.
That sounds good. And that could include gateway provisions.
Yes, we can, exactly. Anybody have any other comments on that page?
Other recommendations, sort of the second half of this chapter, starting off with climate change, and really this focuses on something that Diane and I discussed, specifically the results of the PREPA assessment, or the PREPA, and the findings of the New Hampshire Coastal Risks and Hazard Commission. And I can get into some of the details here, but was sort of looking just for any general comments or discussion related to this item.
And partly, this is driven by the fact that the coastal program helped fund this and with, with newer funds and the focus was on climate change and preparing for future flood risks.
Yeah, I, I will add on that, though, that this was added after the first draft and the RCPD, the first zone that's proposed as part of this, would really be sufficient for any coastal program interest. They view the, sort of the regulatory environment that that RCPD would create as the ultimate goal of them funding a chapter like this. So, it's, this is sort of just an add-on for them.
Prosthetic on the table.
Yeah, right, another way to make them happy.
To get more money.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's great. Any comments on this?
No.
Okay, next page, shoreline protection measures. And I'll, I'll just add really quickly that Diane and I have been working, and I owe Diane something, I know, I owe her a new map that's shown at the bottom of the page here, there need to be some updates.
Didn't you do this, the stream order?
There are some, actually some issues with this map the last time it was done.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It's incorrect, so it needs to be updated. Yes, so.
Okay, I'll let you and your photographer figure that one out.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Matt, since we're a long town, is it just, just to be real fussy, can you do-
Oh, I know what you're going to say.
Can you do a landscape instead of a portrait?
I'm going to push back on that, only because it would be the only-
I know it's hard.
-page in the document that would look like that.
I know, but you'd be able to see it so much better.
You can't see it when it's so small.
What I could do is just include at the end, reference it here.
Yeah.
Is that fine?
Put it in an appendix.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, that's better.
Yeah.
And I, as a matter of fact, proof is in the pudding because I was looking at that map to try to figure out if the application tonight fell within the Piscassic watershed and I could barely see or interpret the map because of the, the detail was just-
So, I'll make that a landscape map.
That'd be great, thank you.
As an appendix.
As an appendix.
As an appendix, yep. Okay, stormwater management standards, open space design, which is another discussion item in a second, and then the property maintenance code, which flows on to the 11th page. Did you want to cover the discussion, Val or Diane, about open space design and flexible subdivision?
Can I comment on storm management first, please?
Go ahead.
Storm management.
Storm water management. Storm management, sorry, storm.
Page nine.
Under the recommendations-
Under the map. Oh, you got a different.
Page nine, I guess I'm lost here. I must have gone earlier.
It's right under the map.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Under the recommendations, I would propose that first box read, greater minimum soil
distance area thresholds for, for application. Again, take out the specificity of that.
Of what, the 20,000 square feet?
Right, because we might want something, we, we want a greater threshold than what is current in the regulations. 20,000 may not be what we want.
What is it now?
What's the one currently?
It's 20,000, isn't it?
I thought it was-
Yeah, so I think we should-
Was it?
Is 20,000 currently?
What?
Ten.
I can't read them. I thought it was 10,000.
It's 10,000.
Well, these are minimum, the way it currently reads is minimum soil disturbance area threshold of 20,000.
So, just don't be that specific.
I'm just saying, don't be so specific, because what we really want is to adopt greater minimum soil disturbance thresholds.
Right.
So, that, yeah.
I think it gives us more flexibility.
Yep. So, Val, what was your language there?
Just add greater in front of minimum and delete of 20,000 square feet. You just want, and make threshold plural.
Okay. So, then the next line, do you want to also get rid of recommended 10%?
And then get rid of the recommended 10%. The more stringent impervious surface limits is the bullet item and get rid of recommended 10%.
We don't have a minimum.
Right, but we can adopt a minimum.
Right, that's right.
We want to adopt, this is like what we want to do. Just adopt more stringent impervious surface limits.
We don't have it in place now.
Right.
So, anything will be more.
And it may vary.
Right.
Exactly. Those are my two comments on that section.
Okay, the next, is that the next paragraph you wanted us to chime in on?
Yeah.
I think it would be helpful if you took this one.
Okay, well, currently, our open space development ordinance is set up as an alternative. I mean, a developer can always come in and do a conventional subdivision, doesn't have to apply, comply with those requirements. And it's been suggested by PREPA that we make it not an option, but mandatory. And I know some communities are going in that direction. Personally, I think we've had some good results here in New Market with our open space design development ordinance. And there are some areas that are particularly vulnerable because of natural resources, wetlands, proximity to Great Bay. So, you know, this would provide a little more, would provide a greater impact in protecting the resources that we have. But that's, I guess it would be a policy decision up to the planning board. We just threw it out for discussion purposes to see how the rest of the board felt.
So, I'm confused, though, in terms of, so it's the line, the planning board may consider making residential open space design developments mandatory in some areas.
Mandatory. Right, mandatory.
I do work in some towns where the requirement is if you have a subdivision of over four lots, it has to be an open space.
Really?
There's a minimum, you know, like that.
I think it's a good policy. Because if it's all about protection of critical habitats, we're so committed to doing that as a town. We're rezoning some of these other areas, you know, the coastal residential overlay district. Then it would be nice to mandate some of these areas as open space, you know, subdivisions.
Maybe not do it on a townwide basis, but hone in on some critical areas, as Val was suggesting. So, maybe the area adjacent to Great Bay would be a good candidate, or some of these areas.
The Piscassic River, we've got so many different watersheds.
Some of these areas have been identified by the, I think, the coastal program had a critical protection area assessment that they did at one point that identified areas that should be protected in town. And that we could tie to that. Do you know what document I'm talking about?
Yeah, Land Conservation Plan for New Hampshire's Coastal Watersheds, 2007, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, tie it to a program that has identified these resources, so they can be targeted for protection.
What would be the advantage, what would be the advantage of having this be kind of, for, I mean, having this be a requirement for certain areas, and then still kind of an option for others, as opposed to having this be the default? And then in areas that are not areas of tremendous natural resource environmental constraints, of having the option be to use what we now consider more traditional?
Just a different way of looking at it? I don't know if there is any.
I don't think there's a right way or a wrong way.
And what this is recommending is for the planning board to take action to review and update what we have now.
Rosie, go ahead.
If, to make it mandatory, the reason it says is that there are considerable threats to natural resources due to environmental constraints. If you have a piece of land with environmental constraints, you can't put that many houses there anyway. But when you have the open space design, you are now allowed a density bonus because you're doing an open space, so that means you're going to have extra septic systems. So, that in effect is not, it's a threat to the environmental system. It's not, and if the open space design ordinance, six, whatever it is, is used properly, the entire concept and reason for open space design was to keep the rural aspect of New Hampshire. So, when you drive by a property with an open space design, you do not see any houses. And that was completely not done with the golf course. You see all those homes there, and that was, that's not one of the criteria. I think the open space ordinance has to be really beefed up. There's a lot of things in there that I wasn't in agreement with certain things. And the entire concept was to keep sensitive land protected by putting the homes together. But by doing that, like I said, they get the extra density, so that means more septic systems, more impact to the environment, and it's, the open space is not being adhered to, and you're seeing homes from the road, and that is not, that's not the intent of that ordinance. So, I don't think I would want to make this mandatory in any area. Because if you have environmental constraints, you're going to be able to put less homes. With an open space, you're going to be able to put more.
Right, but Rosie, what you're doing is just.
You have to do your yield, so you can't get more homes.
You have to do a yield plan.
But you also have a trade-off, Rosie, in that, yes, you would potentially have more septic system, but you significantly reduce stormwater runoff, which adds.
Roads that the town has to maintain.
Which is now becoming a major concern with all the mosquito-borne illnesses. And, you know, in theory, you'd cut less trees down because everything's, you know, it's, there's, there is an overriding, I believe there's an overriding environmental benefit to doing these. None of them are perfect, obviously, but I do believe that there's a significant overriding environmental benefit in general to these. Now, every site is unique.
Absolutely.
Every site is unique. So, there's no one-size-fits-all thing, but I don't think it hurts. I mean, I think it's a, it's a good discussion to have, is do we want to require this? I think we should identify areas where we know they, they are butt, and some sensitive environmental areas where we want to, we want to force the houses to be closer to the road, have more of a buffer to the.
Doesn't the prime wetlands designation do that already, though?
It doesn't in some areas.
It could be an area where there's no prime wetland. It could, you know, it could be a long Ash Swamp Road, you know? A farm that hasn't been, you know, redeveloped yet. You know, why have it all cut up into, you know, two-acre parcels, and then with three other town roads going in, all with two-acre sites? And now the town has to maintain all that.
Just from my question, this would not apply to the residential coastal protection district, right, what we're talking about now, or is it?
It could be part of that.
It could be. We currently have an open space design ordinance on our books. It's an option for a developer to utilize that.
And is that what you think would be best, is to continue to keep it for an option for the resident, the RCPD?
Nope, I think that we should really identify these in critical place and make it mandatory.
In certain areas.
Yeah, I'm open to hearing that.
I agree with that.
So, what are we, what are we saying as a group here?
I think, what I heard is that make it mandatory for critical environmental areas, so that we can target the effort, so that we're focusing our conservation efforts.
Which I think is exactly how it reads now, yeah.
May consider making, yeah, so is that?
Is that adequate?
Is that strong enough in terms of some of these things, that we will do this, just saying that we may take up a discussion of whether we want to do this?
Yeah, because we don't want to make this a law in the, it's that we may consider it.
This is a.
Right, this is a.
We'll change all that.
Yeah, we. This is in the master plan, we would still have to change the zoning to be able to implement it.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. No, but environmentally sensitive areas, like near water and wetlands and so forth. Like Valerie's example was a farm on Green, on Ash Swamp. If that's not draining into a prime wetland or such, to make that area mandatory to put in open space, to me, all that does is lower the cost of the developer, because they don't have to put that much, or they could put the houses right next to each other. So, you know, unless it's.
Roads, the town has to maintain all those roads. So, why give the developer the incentive to put in development as cheaply as possible from his perspective or her perspective? And then the town has the burden of maintaining all of that.
And how much of an area you're going to designate for that? Some people like to have no neighbors. They want a two-acre house lot. So, for new development coming in, I mean.
A developer may decide to do that, but not on a particular land.
But not on an area that's critical.
What if that land is determined to have a high wildlife habitat? It doesn't have to be a wetland, you know, our wildlife habitat is part of our natural resources.
Or it could be a historic resource. It could be a farm that has.
It could be the visual.
Heritage value to the town, and is aesthetically beautiful, and that we want to preserve.
As long as the visuals adhere to, which it has, and that's my concern.
One proven truth over the years, Rosie, is that two-acre zoning is the worst zoning you can have for the environment.
Right.
It's proven. And, you know, I think if we keep going down that road, we're just going to keep damaging our environment. Worse and worse, you know, but. Go ahead, Ezra, you want to say something?
Well, I guess my one concern would be with kind of the discussion about other possibilities regarding character or, you know, historic resource, whatever, that are we limiting ourselves in terms of saying specifically where there are considerable threats to natural resources due to environmental constraints? Because I'm wondering if some of those things that are mentioned would fit under that?
I think that we would have to broaden the language to include cultural resources.
Do you want to delete? Do you just want to say considerable threats to natural resources?
Or cultural resources, too. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be.
Historic and cultural resources.
I mean, it could be that, you know, 19th century farm that you want to preserve.
So, natural, cultural, and historical resources?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that farm may be, you may not be able to preserve the farm.
That's correct.
If it's the house, because the house may be not worth saving. I mean, that does happen, some of these old properties.
We're not saying that they have to save it. We're providing an incentive or tool, so that it could be preserved if somebody wanted to preserve it.
All right. That is good.
And then, Val, did you want to discuss the pork chop lot concept, too? I know this is sort of.
The idea of a pork chop lot subdivision is to give a landowner who has, you know, fairly significant acreage within a zone that may not have sufficient road frontage to put in one driveway that the multiple lots would service. And it could be limited to a two-lot subdivision, a three-lot subdivision, however the board would want, you know, however an ordinance would flow out of that. But that's what the intent of it is for, so that you don't have multiple curb cuts off of a road, and typically off of a scenic road. So, like Durham Point, if you go from Bay Road in New Market to Durham Point, there are several of these, they're called pork chop subdivisions, where there are several homes located off of one driveway. And you don't know that, that there are multiple homes there, because of the way that they can divide up the land. You could have Durham, it's four lots. So, you can come in off one driveway, and you might see one house at the road, possibly two. But in most instances, you're not. You're seeing the homes back that are being all accessed by one driveway and the road maintenance agreement that goes with it. That is how they're typically utilized, and it would be depend how the ordinance is drafted.
So, then basically, you're saying that if a landowner has adequate acreage, like say in the three zones, was it two acre, okay? Wherever it's two acres. And they don't have enough frontage, and they might have six acres. So, now with the pork chop, they can put the three homes there.
Potentially.
Potentially, okay.
So, that is defeating the statements we all just made about the prior open space design development and the chair's recommendation and statement that two-acre house lots is the worst thing that can happen to our town. So, therefore, it's either one way or the other. And that's just opening it up. Absolutely, you can have, if you have enough frontage, you can share a driveway between the two homes. And cutting down on a driveway cut along a road is not a reason to allow pork chops. It's going to add more development. And there was unnecessarily, unnecessary environmental impacts if they didn't have this. I don't see how it's an environmental impact to give someone a pork chop. That's just, I think, adding to the environmental impact, because now you're allowing more development, where development would not be allowed.
Well, no, Rosie, I think, and I understand your position, but I think what.
The graphic around that we had in the early draft.
And again, I've worked in towns where this is allowed. The intent is to stop forcing people to have to build roadways.
They don't have frontage, they can't build a roadway.
Most certainly can.
Sure you can.
You build a roadway into your property.
Oh.
That's the, that's the.
Build a roadway with a cul-de-sac.
That's the intention, is that if you have a 10-acre lot, rather than somebody coming in and putting a 300-foot-long cul-de-sac with a bunch of lots on it, you've got a lot of pavement, a lot of stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. If you let them basically do a glorified driveway, then you eliminate a lot of the environmental impacts associated with, you know, roadway development. That's the intent. Now, again, one size doesn't fit all. There's places where it helps people, there's places where it'll never work, and there's everything in between. But that's the intent, is to reduce the impact of development, environmental impact of development.
And again, I mean, we're, and the one before us for residential open space, we're going to determine, based on natural, historic, and cultural areas, where we should do that, which I'm fine with. But in this, we're going to have the planning board draw up an ordinance that says in select residential districts, I'm sorry, that's basically giving favor to certain areas. And I don't think that some areas should have that be allowed and not others. I just, I just, I think it's too specific. I think if the planning board wants to do an ordinance to allow pork chops, but I do not think something like this belongs in the master plan.
And I don't disagree, maybe you're saying all residential districts, districts is allowed.
But that's something for the planning board to decide. Something this specific should be an ordinance or whatever, but it should not be put in the master plan. It's much too specific.
Can I make a comment? I had the benefit of working for the town of Durham in 1979, when the town of Durham implemented and adopted the pork chop ordinance. I was a planner there, and they had hired a planning consultant out of Boston to assist with it. And it was a growth management ordinance. And the idea at the time, and I don't know how it's changed over the years, but at the time, the idea was that the town wanted to focus development in sort of the urban core area, and not encourage a lot of sprawling development. And they were also interested in making it feasible for water and sewer extensions, so that there could be more users to help pay for the cost of extensions. So, what I recall, and I don't remember that it was Bay Road, but maybe that was a change that occurred afterwards. But I think the intent was, at the time, it was suggested that let's do this as a way to encourage more compact development in the inner areas, so that it's more feasible for the extension of water and sewer, so you won't have that problem with, you know, detriment to groundwater resources and so forth. So, that's my two cents worth that I wanted to contribute. But I would be interested to go out and actually look at some of these. I know that there's one on Mill Road that Chinburg did. And, I mean, it's kind of like you're double, you're putting houses one in back of the other. It's like a double development configuration. But it's at such a density, it's at least one acre of zoning out there, maybe. Val, correct me if I'm wrong. And it really doesn't look bad at all, and it works pretty well. The houses are very nicely designed, and they really fit into the character of the area. So, those are kind of the, give you some background on that.
It also gives a landowner a tool that they wouldn't have under open space, because they probably wouldn't have enough land. If you're talking of a landowner that has, you know, right now, our open space requires 10 acres to even do an open space development.
So, it's more for smaller lots that are fronting on major parterias.
Ezra, you want to say something?
Yeah, so.
They're not big development parks.
Right.
No, that's right.
I see the advantage of this compared to kind of a major subdivision going in, but I guess that my question would be, so when I'm going up Bay Road or down Durham Point Road, I mean, what I think about there is that the homes that are there that have, I mean, I can picture these perfectly. It seems like we, it's not places that you want homes to be built, right? I mean, it's right on the river, the bay, et cetera. And it's places where now, like, it makes sense, because they've been there, and I don't know how long they've been there, that people had the right to do it. But, I mean, I guess my question would be, what is the advantage of doing this versus doing something along the lines of downzoning or other restrictions that still give people rights? I mean, it's not a taking in that sense, but that is more restrictive in terms of what we want to see or not see, as opposed to, I mean, I guess my one concern would be, is this going to encourage more development in areas that we don't want, whereas people would otherwise not? But again, I think that this is better than just saying, oh, you know, you can put in a.
What do you mean by downzoning?
Making it lower density or higher density?
Yeah, I mean, like, so I don't know what currently, I mean, where, I guess, I don't know what currently, where in New Market, we're talking about where this might potentially be put in, and what the current limits are there, or what people are allowed to build there.
I don't think we got that far in our discussion.
Yeah.
I think we wanted to throw the concept out there and see what people thought.
Because it is an LID. It's one of, you know, it's one of the low-impact development planning tools that towns can utilize.
But I guess by downzoning, I mean, lower density, meaning that if before you would be able to put on. Right. So, if before you were able to put on X number of, you know, homes on whatever-sized property, then, you know, it's.
So, rather than two-acre, go to four-acre zone?
Right, something like, yeah. And I'm just curious about that, as, what the benefit is of that versus pork chop?
Dale?
I think it's just the difference of having another tool in your toolkit. That's all it is. It's just saying, we have, in the situations where this solves a problem, we can use it and should consider using it. So, it's basically just having another tool. You're not, you're not saying that we're going to abuse it, right?
Okay, hold on for a minute, Peter, hold on. Dale, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, though, that a lot of the language we've been talking about was ways to limit density on there. I still feel like, in the end, you know, that pork chop development is a way where you likely increase development, which makes a lot of sense when Diane's talking about Mill Road is something where you've accepted that this is going to be a densely developed area, and you've got, it can be attractive, you move some of the houses back off the road, and density was your goal, and you're not minding, that you're not expecting to hold a lot of open space in there. But if you're, if you're out in areas where we're saying we're trying to minimize the development while still giving the landowner their rights, I don't see that pork chop fills any of the objectives in terms of lower density.
So, I have a question. When it says, "The planning board may consider modification of zoning that would allow for such divisions, et cetera, et cetera," is that like allow by right, or is that allow as in it's kind of a special use or conditional use, or something where the planning board gets to review it?
I think that that's the mechanics of drafting an ordinance to implement the. The master plan is the concept, the zoning ordinance is to implement. So, I mean, that would have to be vetted through the public process.
I just think those can lead to very different intentions, though, in terms of what, how it manifests.
Right now, what would stop you is the frontage requirement. This is a way that the frontage doesn't become a limit.
Correct.
Correct.
A five, you know, let's say it's a two-acre minimum, and you have a six-acre lot that's only 250 feet wide. Well, that's, that's going to only allow one lot under a traditional, the way the zoning is now. If you put the pork chop in there, then you may get three lots out of that. And if your goal is to restrict density, then one seems to be across, you know, you're running across your original purpose.
I don't know if the goal is to restrict density, but I agree with what your statement is, you know? Go ahead.
Can I just make one comment? Just, you know, as a practical matter, you know, a lot of people don't like the idea of having shared, common driveways. I know they can work, but it, this is not a perfect world. Neighbors don't always get along. People don't always see eye to eye on how things should be done.
Who's going to plow?
And it can be, it can be a contentious issue if it's, so, you know, as a general rule, maybe it's not as practical as it could be. But it does work in some areas where you have good neighbors.
What's everybody start? What's everybody start?
And then too, I mean, if you do selected residential districts, I might be ticked off, because I'm not allowed to do it and utilize my property to its full extent, when someone else can in another district. So that's, I say, no, it does not belong.
I don't think those would be based on individuals, though. It would be based upon the land and the configuration of it, and so those are not gonna be subjective determinations.
Yeah, but then I'm gonna say, well, why didn't you consider my land? Why is my land different from this piece?
And I'm sure we'd have an answer for that.
I guess it's a twofold question. Is the consensus to delete the whole thing?
Yes.
Or is there first a question to delete the in-selected districts, and then get a consensus on the whole thing?
Rosie, we know where you stand. Dale, what are your thoughts?
I would say delete the whole thing.
Yeah, I think we should not leave pork chops, put pork chops in the master plan until we have a place in the town where we think we need pork chops to meet some goal.
Jane?
I like applesauce with my pork chops, so I need to see applesauce there, so I would support the statement out.
Take the statement out, you said?
Dale?
I'll keep it in.
I think we should take it out.
Okay. Peter?
I think it could stay in.
I would say that, I mean, with the information I have, I would lean towards taking it out. My guess, I guess that I would be able to be convinced of, especially with exploring it, if the alternative is kind of these big roads that are gonna be able to currently go in. But I don't feel like with my current understanding of how it is, that I would support continuing to go forward with it.
So did I hear you say, take it out?
I guess so, yeah.
You're spending too much time in college.
I'm leaving it in. So all the, you have it taken out is, has one, so we'll take it out.
Okay.
Sorry to subject you to that, Matt.
That's okay. All right. Property maintenance code. I'll sort of do this in combination with junkyards as well. John Rattigan did work on both of these, and Mike Hoffman worked on these as well. So there's been some town review after my initial draft of these sections, and they've been refined significantly to better match, I think, the intent of the town. But any comments here?
I think the town will not support this, but that's my first.
What do you mean, more support what?
A property-
Property maintenance code, yep.
Yeah, some of them are so restrictive. I mean, they're crazy.
Well, is there, can I make a general or ask general question? I don't think we're really delved into it. Is it typical that property maintenance code, or this issue of junkyards, would be in the master plan as opposed to a town council function?
The master plan can include recommendations to the town council or to the conservation commission. And I guess I view it as an important tool for both of these areas, generally speaking, are tools to promote quality development in the town. And we have had instances where people have complained about things, such as grass growing too high, and, you know, this area is unsightly, there's too much junk out in the front of the property, and it's detracting from local property values. And right now, we really don't have a tool. So when people call on the phone and they make complaints along those lines, we really don't have anything to hang our hat on. There is a statute for hazardous buildings, you know, if it's a public health or safety risk or threat to public health and safety, then the health officer, the fire department can, can, you know, does have some ability to condemn buildings and that sort of thing. But, you know, it just takes it to another step. And I know some communities, Somersworth has a property maintenance code, which is a smaller community about our size. And I think it's been an effective tool for them.
Yep, it has been.
I don't know many communities that have adopted. I think the big cities, Portsmouth, maybe Manchester.
I'm sure Portsmouth has.
What town had one, did you say?
Somersworth, City of Somersworth has one. That's actually why I-
Down west and down south, they have them all over the place.
Yeah, that's who I discussed this with before I wrote it.
And I'm fine with leaving it in, because it basically says it is recommended that a committee of the planning board be established to consider whether it would be appropriate. That's fine.
Exactly, yeah. As long as we don't have to follow the codes that are written, because those would be-
I mean, and again, it would be advised.
Everybody's fine with leaving it in and just the way it's written.
I think it would be interesting what the public said.
Sure, absolutely.
I guess one thing on it, so, I mean, I think the next part after that makes more sense, of that we would review provisions of code to see what's appropriate, tailor and revise, et cetera. And that seems different to me, unless I'm misunderstanding of whether the international property maintenance code is appropriate to adopt versus not adopt. So it seems like it's whether it'd be appropriate for the town to adopt a property maintenance code, or provisions of the international property maintenance code as opposed to adopt the code.
That's a good point. That's a good point. Did you catch that?
No, Ezra, where are you? Which?
The first sentence under recommendations.
Where it says it's recommended?
Yep. Provisions of code need to be reviewed.
Adopt the international property maintenance code. Basically, want to change that to adopt a property maintenance code, or portions of the international?
Well, actually, that's just the background statement. That's not making any recommendations.
Recommendation.
No, I was just giving some-
Oh, I thought, I thought you were reading up at the background.
No, he's down there.
Let me see.
I think, right here.
Were you under recommendations? Okay, I missed that.
So you want that to read?
So to adopt-
A property maintenance code, or?
To adopt a property maintenance code.
Or portions of the international property maintenance code.
Right. And I think there's some provisions in the code that go a little bit too far, you know?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, do you want your town staff to be out, make sure people's lawns aren't greater than six inches in height?
I feel like we're getting kind of on an HOA type of thing with that.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it-
The town wins the court.
In some towns, I'm sure, in some places, go to that extreme. But, of course, it's an administrative burden. I think in Somersworth, they had to hire two or three-
They did.
Code enforcement.
If an ordinance is-
I'd love to be able to just administer.
If an ordinance is developed, it would be the council that would have to approve it anyway.
That's right. That's correct.
So they could use the common sense provisions in there and leave all the others.
Right. I think maybe it would be appropriate for the town to adopt a property maintenance code. I wouldn't adopt the parts of the international property maintenance code. I wouldn't want that in there, because even parts of it's really stringent.
I think it's designed in such a way that you can modify the provisions and tailor them to your community.
I think Somersworth actually did that very thing. I don't think they adopted the entire code.
I don't support adopting anything, but I think it's fair to have it in here. And if the people in the town want to adopt the code, fine. But when somebody comes and tells me that my grass is too long, never get mowed again.
You're missing the point again. The point is not to over-manage. The point is other thing, it's broader, like, public health, like you said.
Exactly.
You mentioned mosquito control. If you've got standing water on your property, and it's a junkyard, and you're creating a public health hazard, and nobody can step in and do anything about it?
Don't come visit.
Understood.
That's a different story.
Can I have a quick comment on that?
Go ahead.
So under purpose and benefits, go one, two, three, the fourth line down, after structures, can we add in neighboring property values?
Yeah.
I think, isn't that the purpose that you would?
Yeah.
And then on the, five, six.
But that, wait a minute, what was that, the?
After unsafe structures, in neighboring property values.
But this, this is only to, that whole sentence is just a requirement to protect the health and safety of citizens against the hazards of inadequate defective of our unsafe structures. It has nothing to do with property values. That's a whole different animal.
Well, but that's another benefit of saying.
But I'm saying, I'm saying it's to ensure the community vitality, I mean, the code provides standards and minimum requirements for, you could put a colon, put everything in with semicolons, and then add that. I mean, if, to be grammatically correct. I'm not saying that has anything to do with the prior. It's, it's another reason why to adopt.
Right, to protect property values. All right.
And then on the, the end of the seventh line, because we talk about, the code addresses subjects such as abandoned factories, vacant buildings, obsolete offices, and it goes on, addresses property upkeep issues commonly referred to as nuisances, by prohibiting the accumulation of trash and debris. I think the other issues that our code enforcement is dealing with is the storage of unregistered motor vehicles.
That falls under the junkyard. That's under the junkyard.
Okay. These collection bins that people can just put on their property. You know, there's nothing prohibiting those, dumpsters, pods. We have no regulations relative to any of those, and no basis to adopt that regulation, correct?
I think we can adopt regulation.
But it would be, it would be part of that.
It would be part of that, yes.
You know, it's not just talking about trash and debris, or not-
Basically, I mean, people putting those collection, collection bins out in front of their properties, that's a pretty large item to put out there. And if it's not on their site plan approval, darling, you can't do it, and it's just up to code enforcement to go tell them to get it on there.
But it's, no?
It's not, it's not subject. Single-family homes aren't subject to site plan approval.
Right.
These codes are town-wide.
There has been, it was an ordinance recently passed, Dale. I think Mike Hoffman made some recommendations on dumpster screening, if I'm not mistaken. Was that during your tenure on the council, maybe Amy?
Real recently, aren't you?
It was about six months ago.
Right.
Yeah. You know, we require, as part of site plan, that people have to screen their dumpsters. But people that don't go through our process don't have to, and that's, you know, that's a problem. And I think the council tried to address that through an ordinance adopted under the police powers in the town, to be able to deal with that.
Yeah, I'm already-
I don't remember the details.
Foggy on it, but it was, it, probably, that's one thing that would be useful about that, is because if you have, this approach might be better, because when we were talking about the screening, I know one of the things Mike brought up to us, is that if you have somebody that's sort of being exceptionally problematic, and you approach them, but somebody else is not under that ordinance, because they're in a, they're in a little, they're not in a multifamily or something, and they're doing the same thing-
That's not fair. You want equal protection.
Creating an equal eyesore, but not underneath the regulations we have now, then you don't have the ability to address that. So I think the value in this is a comprehensive look at all those issues, and see what's reasonable.
That's right.
Any other comments on property maintenance code? Onto junkyards. Comments on junkyards? All right.
Two quick hitters, the developer's guide and roundtable, basically a discussion of the regulations with developers, and then the zoning ordinance modifications for economic development. These are specific recommendations that came out of the EDC.
In regards to junkyard?
No, no, sorry, we're on the last page.
And that's in addition to the recommendations for assisted housing and continuing here for retirement communities.
That's not it. It's 12th here.
Can I, please, quickly, though, on the junkyard, just one small thing about, what is the, it says about, in some instances, the police department should be involved in determining whether a potential junkyard licensee has a criminal record that could prevent issuance of a license?
Yes. This is state, this is state statute.
Okay, so it just, what is, okay, great.
So it's a screening process to make sure that it's a legitimate business, and there's nothing illegal going on there.
And also, getting back to junkyards, this is something that the town council has to act on. All the, all the formulation of the application and the process is all up to the town council, and it is mandatory, according to the state RSA. And it's been going on for about five years.
Anybody have any other comments? Go ahead.
Just under the zoning ordinance modifications for park development, at the end of the first paragraph, it says, "Consistent with the purposes of the zoning districts and recommendations for zoning changes to those districts."
Wait, where are you?
The first sentence of, under zoning ordinance modifications.
Okay, yeah.
So if you read from the second line, "In order to expand and promote their compatibility consistent with the purposes of the zoning districts and recommendations for zoning changes to those districts." So then, under B3 zoning, I would delete, for example, because we've got these specific recommendations from the EDC that have come into this. It's not a, for example, these are, it's the recommendations. It is, it has been recommended.
Although I remember that most of these seem to be very close votes, in terms of what the recommendation was. And so I guess my question is, there's no action in this section? Like, there's nothing that says, like, the planning board should consider whether or not to adopt these recommendations, or anything like that? Should we have some language that says we're doing something about this? Otherwise, it just seems like it's a statement of, these are recommendations that have been made.
I think you need to turn into an action statement. Did you get that point, Matt?
I'm writing it down right now.
Something that the planning board would recommend that these modifications be considered for zoning changes, or something along those lines.
And that's-
Well, you could put, well, let me reword it, and recommendations for the planning board to adopt zoning changes to those districts.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna modify that first sentence, then.
Yes. And take out, for example.
And then, going back to developer's guide and roundtable, I guess my question is about this roundtable, and what is the advantage of having a closed, non-public meeting with staff and developers?
Comfort. Comfort for developers, and sort of confidentiality, too, that goes with it. And comfort for staff, as well, to speak openly about development. That's pretty common in these developers' roundtables.
Does that mean the planning board would sit with developers and talk?
No.
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 Staff would.
Staff.
And I think, you know, many communities want to engage the development community before changes are made, and this would provide an opportunity to get their perspective and point of view. And we've done that. I mean, when we talked with Thalzone last summer, you know, we were able to package it and get it before the planning board for discussion, but we did have, you know, honest conversations about whether it was something that was feasible, given the temper of the town, tempo, temper of the town.
So basically, having those, that roundtable discussion privately with staff, and then what every, you came up, would come back to the planning board.
Right, for consideration. Yeah, it's fine.
I guess, I'll just say, my perspective is just that, I think that, I mean, if staff has meetings with developers, or organizes a meeting that is not a public meeting, I think that's their prerogative, that's what happens. But I don't feel comfortable with us putting in a future land use chapter, a non-public process that we're endorsing in this, of this nature.
This is just trying to get a developer's guide developed.
To help.
It would come before the board.
Right, so that we would, and it would be an administrative thing. It wouldn't necessarily be a policy thing. These are our regulations. This is what you need to do to file an application before the board. We want to try to simplify it, streamline it, so it's not an onerous, burdensome process. And what can we do to make our process better? And I mean, that's like, going to your stakeholders and hearing what their concerns are, and taking them under advisement.
Oh, that could be done in a public process, as well. Yes, but highly unlikely to get.
You're not gonna get any input.
You're not gonna get honest, you know?
Yeah.
And you're not gonna get the participation of the developers.
I mean, I can see, like Ezra said, it's the process. We're discussing a process here, and a process probably should, I can see putting developer's guide, because that's what we want to get, is a developer's guide. We don't, the roundtable, to me, is, I don't know if that should belong in.
Well, it's a way, it's a technique to solicit input from the-
Well, that's how you would get the developer's guide.
People who are affected most by what you're doing.
Is to have a roundtable. But do you need that process listed in the, in the master plan? I mean, you're looking to get a guide.
You can delete that whole paragraph and still do it.
And my caution is just also, I mean, the town I come from, I mean, I just remember conspiracy theories left and right about what developers were saying, and what staff was saying, and whose side staff was on it. And they just want to prevent also, kind of, just those things from happening as well.
Dale's right, you could develop, you could delete that whole last paragraph.
Yeah, I mean, that's not necessary. Good, good point, Ezra.
We can do it anyways.
Yeah?
We can do it anyways.
Exactly, I mean.
Just be more devious.
You want to do what, what he devious make.
All right, thank you. Well, Matt, I guess you've got some direction. Do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Can we make a motion to move this to public hearing as amended?
We can. Is that a motion?
As amended?
So move?
Second.
Sure.
For the May meeting.
For the May, yeah.
May 10th meeting.
We would need to have a text in advance, that when the public hearing notice goes out, we can say to the public, I draft, the final draft of what we have a public hearing on.
You said May 10th?
May 10th, yeah.
But you need it, Bob.
I need it.
Fifteen days in advance.
Perfect.
It's just a few changes.
Next tomorrow.
Well, I know what I'm doing tonight.
We'll post that on the website.
You go back.
Is there, is, any discussion on the motion on the table?
I second it. I think the deadline is the 25th.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
End of next week. Matt's saying yes, he can.
Okay. All righty.
Wunderbar.
Thank you very much.
So, last thing, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Last thing on the agenda is any chairman's report. I have nothing to report, other than I've been sick for a week. Nobody cares. Committee reports, any committee reports? Go ahead.
Yeah, I talked to the chair of the EDC, and once we get through this master plan, he just, he thinks that as we start to move forward to development, if this gets adopted, any CCRC, or the elderly housing on New Road, he'd like to have another joint meeting.
Okay.
Okay. That'd be great.
Anybody else have any other committee reports? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Town council met last Wednesday. It was pretty much reorganization for the new year. And then we also discussed a couple of things that came up. A new ambulance was one, and there was another truck, right, Dale, that we talked- there was another truck, right, Dale, that we talked about? Which one was that?
Dump truck.
The dump truck, right. So, we approved both of those, and yeah, that's pretty much it.
Got to put that on the chair.
Any...
I just have, we now have the agenda for the Office of Energy and Planning Spring Workshop, which is going to be on June 4th, and it's going to be in Concord at the Graffoni Conference Center, which is over near the old Page Belting Company, right off of Route 93. And it is copies of the agenda, I think everybody got one in their mailbox, and we have funding available in the budget to pay for your registration fees as well as your travel costs, and we encourage people to carpool because we're ecologically minded.